Yes, I got it. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council. And can everybody please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is one nation under the great power of the Constitution.
Ms. Lawrence, can you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Gillette?
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Mayor Pro Tim Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Irwin?
Present. And we are moving on to item four, which is request for continuing... or agenda item, and 7A under closed session will be moved to the end of the meeting, and with the other closed sessions, and item 7B is going to be pulled from the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and now we have our special presentations and announcements, and I will be coming Hold on. All right. Our first special presentation this evening proclaims February 2008 as American Red Cross of Ventura County Disaster Action Team Awareness Month in Thousand Oaks. The American Red Cross of Ventura County prepares for and responds to disasters 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Through its disaster action team, Red Cross provides relief to victims of natural and man-made disasters. I would like to introduce Chris Johnson, the Chief Executive Officer of the American Red Cross of Ventura County, to tell us more about their latest projects. Chris?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, I feel like it's Old Home Week coming to Thousand Oaks, because Thousand Oaks has been a tremendous partner of American Red Cross, and I do interact with a lot of the staff and members of the council on a fairly regular basis. What we're excited to talk about now is an event that happens tomorrow that kicks off a countywide, starting in Thousand Oaks, campaign to make us be a better-prepared county. And first of all, I wanted to make sure we are a volunteer organization led by, governed by volunteers, and I did put out a quick call to Thousand Oaks to see if anybody could come at the last minute, and I wanted to say thanks to the volunteers that showed up. Wave your hands. Those are the people that come out at 3:00 in the morning to give you a hug whenever there's a disaster. So, thank you, guys, very, very, very much. Lately, with the wildfires, and with the news and the information about preparedness that everybody has top of mind, the American Red Cross came to realization in Ventura County that we aren't quite ready, and we need to be better prepared. And although we work with Graham and the other staff here in Thousand Oaks in making sure that the community is prepared as it could be, we recognize that there's an asset shortage, both in disaster response volunteers, as well as the cots and blankets it takes to make shelters. So, this campaign that's kicking off tomorrow is going to take us in a direction where we will have those assets in a place so that the citizens of Thousand Oaks can feel safer. We will have volunteers trained to open shelters from the community, so those friends and neighbors will recognize friends and neighbors when they go and show up at those shelters in need. Tomorrow, we've been very fortunate to have two individuals, Jimmy Cho from SoCal Edison, and Dr. Terry... ah, Dr. Terry O'Sullivan, sorry, Terry, I forgot your last name for a second. Dr. O'Sullivan is an expert from Homeland Security that talks about non-natural disasters, bioterrorism, pandemics, and the tragedies and the unique nature of those events and what they can do to a community. Mr. Cho has a more recent experience that he's going to talk about. He was in charge and responsible for some of Southern California Edison's efforts down in San Diego during those wildfires, and what he's going to speak about tomorrow at an event at Sherwood Country Club is the challenge it takes to keep your business operating and running when those that you need to show up to help run the business are themselves in the middle of the disaster. And that's something that happened to Southern California Edison when the event occurred in the wildfires down there. So, we're very proud to be here. Part of what we're doing is challenging each community to step forward, get involved, become a volunteer. We're challenging each community to also step forward and help support financially the goals that we're having, we're trying to raise. The capital campaign is a $2 million campaign, of which we need about $800,000 to reach that goal. And what we've done is, and you guys should have in front of you, two documents. One is a... Thank you, Scott. Yeah, one is a case statement that talks about the campaign and all of the facts and figures, and the other document, thank you again, Scott, is the breakdown of the dollars and cents that we will be seeking and the amount of volunteers that we're looking for. So, if I could thank you again for your constant contributions in support of the Red Cross. Again, it's nice to come in and recognize faces of all the individuals that have stepped forward and supported us. We actually do our business for Thousand Oaks out of this building, and through the generosity of the city council and the staff, are going to get an expanded location here in a few months, and we're very excited and looking forward to that. We're going to go to a five-day-a-week, eight-hour-a-day operation here to expand our services, and we're very much looking forward to that. So, tomorrow, big event, Sherwood Country Club. Mr. Cho and Dr. O'Sullivan are going to be there making a presentation, so thank you very much for those, gentlemen, and you will be hearing from us a lot in the near future relative to all the events taking place. We did have a slide presentation. I don't know if we still want to show that. Can we do that? What we're talking about real quick, and I'm sorry for those of you that are too far away from the screen, is DAT. What is DAT? DAT stands for Disaster Action Team. Those are those people that give you a hug at 3:00 in the morning when you're a victim of a fire, or when you go into a shelter. That's where they got their training, was the initial DAT response. This sheet that's in front of you, excuse me, talks about what is DAT, and the types of people it takes to make up those Disaster Action Team members. Disaster Action Teams have been around for years. They're what we do every day of the week, seven days a week, 365 days. Next slide. One of the things we noticed, we very quickly did a study from 1970 to now, and the population growth that has taken place east county has been astounding. You've got some communities, Thousand Oaks has grown over 250% in that time period, and it's in that document. Scott is showing you again. You're a good Vanna, Scott, if I can say that appropriately. And what it showcased to the American Red Cross was that, what I mentioned earlier, is the fact that the growth is to the east, and we need to catch up to it, and we need to make our assets be in their proper locations. What you're seeing here is our disaster response for last year alone. These are the facts and figures of how many disasters. There were 53 disasters that Red Cross Ventura County responded to just last year. And keep in mind, single-family fires, to those involved in those fires, it's a disaster, so we do count that. It also talks about the amount of people trained in life-saving techniques, and it talks about the 4,500 of our military that we helped see off on their deployment and welcome them home. This is the map of what the future's going to look like, in green. In pink or magenta is where we are now, and we're planning on, as you can see, if you look at Thousand Oaks, an expanded presence in Thousand Oaks, expanded classes, expanded assets available in Thousand Oaks, and we're moving our hub from Ventura to Camarillo so that we can have a better, more central location to distribute goods from. And finally, that's the document I alluded to a little bit earlier. We call the DAT hub. We've got 10 communities we're reaching out to. The very first one is Thousand Oaks, and we're very proud to be here, and we do, of course, reiterate that challenge, and we look for that support that's been ongoing throughout our career. So, thank you very much for having me, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me take the podium.
And I just want to say, Chris, thank you very much for the valuable service you provide to our community, and we have a proclamation for you in honor of American Red Cross of Ventura County Disaster Action Team Awareness Month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Should we open it?
This has such beautiful words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. And Rudy Gonzalez, will you please join me? Every home in Thousand Oaks is touched by Southern California Edison's services. Tonight, we have their regional manager, Rudy Gonzalez, here to tell us more about the state of the utility system, the strides being made in meeting the growing electricity demand, and Edison's efforts to remain an industry leader in alternate and renewable energy. Those were your subjects for this evening, Rudy. All right, here's Rudy.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, councilmembers and staff. My name is Rudy Gonzalez, and I'm Edison's Public Affairs Manager here in Thousand Oaks. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening and share with you the state of Edison presentation. We can move on to the next slide. This slide shows that Southern California Edison's service territory covers most of the Southern California region. On an average day, Edison provides power to 13 million people, 428 cities and communities in a 50,000-square-mile service area encompassing 11 counties in central coastal and Southern California. Among our commercial, industrial, and nonprofit customers are 5,000 large businesses and 280,000 small businesses. Edison is one of the nation's largest investor-owned electric utilities with more than 120 years of service. We are an industry leader supplying more alternate and renewable energy than nearly any other utility in the world. Edison has also won many award-winning energy efficiency programs, and has been recognized nationally six times with the Energy Star Award by the United States EPA and the Department of Energy for its effectiveness of its energy efficiency programs. Edison's environmental commitment is to preserve and protect the environment in the communities in which you work and live. To deal with the increasing energy demands, Edison has committed to investing in increasing major transmission lines, upgrading our aging infrastructure, increasing reliability, and decreasing the demand through enhanced energy efficiency programs. We are committed to renewable energy resources and incorporating new technologies resulting in safer, in a safer, cleaner environment. Edison has a long history of environmental stewardship, and we are committed to providing leadership in the reduction of California's greenhouse gas emissions. Edison is the nation's leading provider of renewable energy among utilities in the United States. As we continue adding to our renewable portfolio, we need to build new transmission lines, routes to deliver the green power to our customers. We are also upgrading our existing infrastructure and adding new distribution infrastructure to support our growing communities. At various stages of planning and construction, our six regional transmission projects to address reliability, load growth, and to relieve congestion. Over the next decade, Edison will invest approximately $9 billion in our distribution system and $4.3 billion to expand our high-voltage transmission grid. Our biggest challenge to overcome will be the resistance we get from communities who do not want to see these transmission lines in their neighborhood. Edison has made it a priority to provide additional resources to meet extreme power demands with the accelerated construction of smaller gas, natural gas peaker power-generating plants. Four peaker plants were constructed in 2007, each capable of producing about 45 megawatts of electricity. By the way, a megawatt of electricity will serve approximately 700 homes. Our primary objective in the city of Thousand Oaks is to maintain a reliable electric system. As part of our plan to address possible loading issues, we are in the process of designing two additional circuits to serve the community. These circuits are scheduled for installation later this year and in 2009. These circuits will minimize the possibility of unplanned outages during a heat storm. All Edison facilities are periodically inspected as part of our maintenance program. If it is determined that a piece of equipment is susceptible to failure, that piece of equipment will be replaced. As this work is completed, it may be necessary for us to coordinate planned outages. We understand this is a huge inconvenience to our customers, and every effort is made to notify customers several days ahead of these outages. Our line-clearing personnel patrol the overhead lines in the community to ensure we have proper clearance from trees. As a result of this work, we were able to minimize the number of tree-related outages during the recent wind and rainstorms that we experienced. I'm aware of the fact that we have certain pockets in the community where they experience more than their fair share of outages, and we are doing everything we can to address these areas. Edison customers do a wonderful job of saving energy. However, there is so much more potential. The city of Thousand Oaks, through your staff efforts, has set an excellent example for the community by becoming leaders in energy conservation for all your residents. We encourage you and your residents to take part in the Energy Star Change Light, Change the World promotion. We ask that you change out your old incandescent light bulbs to compact fluorescent lights or CFLs. If every California household replaced five incandescent light bulbs with CFLs, it would be the equivalent of taking more than 400,000 cars off the road, and it would reduce your electric bill. Edison is the nation's leader, leading purchaser of renewable energy, buying and delivering to customers approximately 13 billion kilowatt-hours per year. The company buys one-sixth of all the U.S. renewable energy. We are working hard to help the environment and achieve the 20% renewable goal set by the California Public Utilities Commission by the year 2010. We are currently at about 17% for our renewable portfolio and far ahead of other California utilities. As part of Governor Schwarzenegger's $3.3 billion, Million Solar Ruins Program, the state has set a goal to create 3,000 megawatts of new solar-produced electricity by the year 2017, moving the state towards a cleaner energy future and helping lower the cost of solar power systems. By 2012, Edison will replace today's electric meters with a new kind of metering device that improves customer service and helps customers save money by saving energy and by offering new rate options. These devices may ultimately reduce day-to-day utility operations' costs by streamlining processes and automating the matching of resources with demand. Edison has taken a leadership role in supporting safe, reliable, and cost-effective electric supply for various types of service vehicles and equipment. For 20 years, we've been the leading promoter of the use of electric vehicles, and we have the largest private electric vehicle fleet in the United States. We're also partnering with automakers to evaluate and encourage the use of plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. Our commitment to you is to provide regular communications updates like this one today. We will be bringing you updated rate information as it becomes available. Truly, our biggest challenge as your local electric utility will be in siting, transmission, distribution, and generation projects. It is likely we will be seeking the city's cooperation as we install facilities necessary to meet the growing demand in the community. In addition, as we upgrade the local distribution system, we ask for your patience as we conduct our planned outages in order to complete the work. We will continue to communicate to your staff and to provide information in the event of unplanned or emergency outages. I've been working with your staff now for nearly 13 years, and in my opinion, we enjoy an excellent working relationship. And the next two slides, one is a summary of what I just discussed, and the last slide is important phone numbers and email addresses for our customers to contact Edison for any issues that they may be experiencing. And with that, I appreciate the time tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rudy, thank you very much for that update, whatever. I had mentioned this, and I'll mention it again to hopefully a response. I received a call again this morning. I've received several calls. A particular area of Thousand Oaks bordered by Jan's Road, Freeway 23, Gainesboro Road, and Moore Park Road, that square, that quadrant, that seems to be experiencing a disproportionate number of outages. And the comment was, they're pleased that when they call, the people that have talked to me do have the contact numbers, although when there is an outage, those numbers are inundated, and it takes a while, and they understand that. But the point was, that it seems, it seems that there's a disproportionate amount of downtime in that area. Is, number one, Edison cognizant of that, aware of it, and are there efforts being made to address that particular section within our city?
We do monitor all outage activity, and if we see that there appears to be a pattern of a high number of outages in a particular area, we do take a look to see if we can determine what the root cause is, and we'll change out of equipment if necessary. So, we are aware of it, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening.
Just a quick question regarding solar energy. Is Southern California Edison going to somehow change its, or offer rebates for those customers who are going to install solar?
If I understand correctly, most of the rebate programs for solar systems are administered through the California Energy Commission, and that would be where customers would look for rebate opportunities.
So, Southern California Edison itself is not going to do anything in that regard?
Not that I'm aware of, at this point.
Perhaps that's something that you might want to look into.
Perhaps it's something that we will look into in the future, yes. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Rudy, and we do appreciate your emphasis on renewable energy. Actually, we are installing at home a solar system on our house. Our last presentation this evening is proclaiming March 3, 2008, as Read Across America Day. Would Colleen Bryner Schmidt please join me? Celebrating its 11th anniversary, this wonderful program is cosponsored by the Canejo Valley Unified School District and the Unified Association of Canejo Teachers. Read Across America celebrates Dr. Seuss's 104th birthday and encourages reading literacy for all students. I know that our city council members and city staff are invited to join, to visit local schools and read to students as part of this program, and I would encourage everybody to. I've already committed to Medronia Elementary School, and it's always a fun experience. I would like to introduce Colleen to tell us more about what will be happening on March 3. Colleen?
That Sam I am, that Sam I am. I do not like that Sam I am. That Sam thinks she is just so cool because she learned to read in a Canejo Valley school.
Do you like to read all day?
I do not like to, Sam, I say.
Would you read books here or there?
I would not read books here or there. I would not read books anywhere. I do not like to read all day. I do not like to read, I say.
Would you read books in a house? Would you read books to a mouse? Would you read books in a box? Would you read books with Mr. Fox? I know you read, why even bet? You'd like to read with Mr. Gillette.
Not in a house, not to a mouse, not in a box, not with Mr. Fox. Keep the books in a sack. I will not read with Mr. Gillette.
Come on, reading is fun. It will tickle your fancy. Would you read with Mr. Glancy? Books are amazing. They put your mind in a whirlwind. Come on, read a book with Mayor Irwin. The excitement is there. It's hard to contain ya. If only you will read with Miss Bill de la Peña.
It is not fun. It is not fancy. I will not read with Mr. Glancy, nor Miss Bill de la Peña, or Mayor Irwin. I don't care what they've been doing.
Now, you say you don't like to read, or so you say. Try it, try it, and you may. Try reading, and you may, I say.
Sam, if you will let me be, I will try to read, and you will see. Say, I like to read this book. I do. I do. I think I'm hooked. Find all the books that you can get. I want to read with Mr. Gillette. Hurry now, or I'll get antsy. I can't wait to read with Mr. Glancy. I will read books in a house. I will read books with a mouse. In a box, with Mr. Fox. I'll get stirring with Mayor Irwin. You've tried so hard, now I really don't blame ya. I can't read, wait to read with Miss Bill de la Peña. I will read books here and there. I will read books everywhere. I even like to read about ham. So, thank you. Thank you, Sam I am. This is the 10th year that NEA and our local chapter of UACT has sponsored Read Across America, focusing the country's attention on how important it is to motivate children to read. Just recently, Jim Trellese came to our community. This is one of his last stops. He is now retiring, but very often, he's talked about the fact that very few children have stayed up late with a flashlight to read a workbook page under the covers. But they will do that with a book that's engaging, and it's up to us as the leaders of the community, as the parents and as the educators, to bring, to encourage this reading and to focus our city's attention as well. Over the past few years, NEA has been encouraging local chapters to get involved in providing books to schools and organizations who are in great need of these books. In the past, NEA has helped with Hurricane Katrina victims and other schools. This year, Ariana Greenwich has written, received a grant from the Tri-County Gate Association to sponsor a special Read-A-Thon and fundraiser, and I'll have Ariana tell you about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariana Greenwich, and I am a third-grade student in the open classroom program at Canejo Elementary School, and I am here to tell you about my Read-A-Thon project, which coincides with Read Across America Week. The Read-A-Thon will take place on Saturday, March 1, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Canejo Elementary School. The goal is to read 5,000 pages, and all participants are invited to bring a book to donate to the children at Casbah Sifika, which is a foster home for children. I would like to invite you all to drop in on March 1 and read some pages to help me reach my goal so we can change our community one reader at a time. Thank you.
And we have a T-shirt for you. Ariana. And then she has posters to invite everyone to the Read-A-Thon at Canejo School on March 1.
Oh, Ariana, you should be very proud of yourself, and I think everybody should give Ariana a big hand. Thank you very much for this, and on behalf of the entire city council, I have a proclamation here in honor of Read Across America Day. Thank you for everything you do. Can I have Ms. Lawrence please read, announce the public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda, and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Nine people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Right, and our first speaker under public comments is our police chief, Dennis Carpenter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Dennis Carpenter, police chief, City Thousand Oaks. With the tragic events in Missouri last week, I thought it appropriate that we comment tonight on security in our facility, in our city. Of course, we are fortunate enough to live in one of the safest cities in the nation, but we know by past events, at least during my tenure here, we've had our share of deaths resulting from homicide, and we certainly will want to avoid such events at any future day, whether it's at city hall or any part, anywhere in our city. But I just wanted, a few things that I wanted to remind the council about, and that is, and the Star interviewed me last Friday and did a good job on a follow-up article about this, and that was that I serve in the role of essentially the sergeant in arms. You always have a police officer here in your meetings, every, every city council meeting. If I'm not here, Captain Pentis, or another captain, or one of my sergeants is here, but typically, Captain Pentis or I am present in all the meetings. There are times when issues develop, when emotional issues are being presented or discussed, and people get carried away, and the council might see me pop into action, and the public may not see that, but I go behind the scenes and deal with the issue as best as I can. At times, I call additional units in, I have obviously a telephone with me, and I'm able to bring officers in to deal with the situation. From time to time, when I know in advance that we may have a large crowd, that it might be unruly, there might be issues that could develop, I have a uniformed officer in the audience, or frequently, I'll have a plainclothes officer in the audience that no one, except maybe the city manager and I, might know is present. I'm not alarmed or concerned about providing that information. I want the public to know that this is a safe place, they should feel safe to come and be here and be able to do their, the people's business. You should know, we did a training recently with California Lutheran University, the sheriff's department did, the police department, the fire department, and AMR, ambulance company, responding to an active shooter situation. Since Columbine, we have trained regularly in dealing with those scenarios, and I'll take it one step further and call it active disturbance. If there's a disturbance or an active shooter, the officers are going to respond, arrive on scene, and deal with the situation at hand. You should know that I participate in those events, whether as an incident commander or a first responder, Randy does as well, so you have a trained staff that's here that's available to respond to these issues. There are many other things that we could talk about, evacuation routes out of this building, we could talk about metal detectors, but we really couldn't limit it just to city council meetings. So much more business occurs in this facility, the city hall is open all the time. There are planning meetings, there are traffic commission meetings, there are libraries, there are a variety of events where we would need to consider raising the level of our security if we chose to do that. And I'm sure, I'm certain over time, that the city manager and I will have some discussions, potentially some of you will be doing the same, where we'll talk about what plans we might create for, for the future. With that, I'll sign off. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Carpenter. Our second speaker is Jared Hatland, and he will be followed by Natalie Selaci and Marissa Morrison. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor Erwin, council members and staff. I'm Jared Hatland, and I'm a member of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission, and this year's chair of the 8th Annual Rock the Oaks Concert. We would like, or we would like to invite all of you, and our viewers at home, to come to the Rock the Oaks Concert. It's a local rock concert, held on, or here in the Share Forum Theater, on February 29th at 7:30 PM, and it will be featuring four local rock bands from the Thousand Oaks area. There will be Midnight Shakes, Big Brother, A Better Transit, and Cicada. Tickets are available at the Civics Arts Plaza box office for $15. And on behalf of the Youth Commission and the Thousand Oaks Civics Arts Plaza Foundation, we would also like to thank you guys for allowing to put this on every year, and the Alliance for the Arts for making this all possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. And next, we have Natalie and Marissa.
Good evening, Mayor Erwin, council members and staff. My name is Natalie Selachi, and we are, oh, and...
And I'm Marissa Morrison.
And we are Thousand Oaks Youth Commissioners, and this year's co-chairs and coordinators of the 18th Annual Therapeutic Dance. The therapeutic dance is held for young adults with special needs in Ventura County. We would like to invite you to this year's event, which will be held on March 8th, from 6:00 to 9:30 PM at the Alex Fiori Teen Center. The theme this year is A Night at the Oscars, and we will transform the teen center into a star-studded event, complete with a red carpet. Dinner will be provided by Amici's, along with an Oscar-worthy entertainment by Elvis, AKA Raymond Michael, and a balloon drop. Admission for the event is $5, and scholarships are available. We would also like to thank the following donors for their generous support of this year's therapeutic dance. Amici's Pizza and Pasta, BJ's Restaurants, Build-A-Bear Workshop, Carino's Italian Grill, Claim Jumpers, Diamond Ground Products, Domino's Pizza, Hooper Camera Stores, Garvin Family Trust, In-N-Out Burgers, JCPenney Plumbing and Things, Macaroni Grill, Mastro's Steakhouse, Nancy Lynn Paul Trust, Nordic Nursery, Raymond Michael, Real Mex Restaurants, Sees Candies, Dr. Stephen P. Kundle, Subway on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Trader Joe's, Vaughn's Westlake Village, and Western Bagel. We would also like to thank city council, Canejo Recreation and Park District, therapeutic division staff, T.O. Teen Center staff, T.O.T.V., and all the wonderful volunteers for your support and hard work on this product, project. For more information on this event or to donate, please call 805-449-2743, or email youthcommission@tox.org. Thank you.
And Natalie and Marissa and Jared, of course, are all on the Youth Commission, and you guys do really great work, and thanks to you and all your fellow commissioners. Our next speaker is Jerry Robings, and he will be followed by Sandy Jolie.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jerry Robings, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I wanted to speak tonight about the Traffic Congestion Initiative that will be on the ballot in June, because it's so imperative that the citizens of this community understand ramifications. A number of citizens have been arguing that this so-called Traffic Congestion Initiative has nothing at all to do with traffic, but rather is a well-designed campaign by the Duett Center Corporation to block Home Depot from building on Hampshire Road. Our position has been strengthened by the campaign finance report filed with the city that shows expenditures by the Duett Center Corporation, which includes Neiman Reed, Lumber City, and Patio World, expenditures of $210,000 as of December 31st, and they will likely spend an additional $1 million to campaign for the passage. The report also discloses that the consulting firm owned by Jim and Nora Adakis has been paid $44,000 for pushing this initiative. Can anyone with a straight face really claim that the Duett Center is spending $210,000 because they're concerned about traffic congestion? The idea that such spending is based on traffic concerns is contradicted by the pattern already established by the Duett Center and Lumber City. Disconnect the dots. While they are currently engaged in litigation to block Home Depot in the community of Sunland Tahunga, they have successfully blocked Home Depot in Agoura Hills, and the Lowe's store in Westlake Village by distorting the initiative to gain a competitive advantage. They have used the public vote for their own undisclosed benefit. Now they're attempting to block Home Depot here in Thousand Oaks by obtaining signatures at tables that declare petitions were to, quote, "save open space." If successful with this initiative, they will be the only hardware store along an eight-mile stretch of Ventura Freeway, essentially holding monopoly, meaning they will not have to compete for business. Their customers need not look for bargains. Their customers will be losers, as well as the citizens of Thousand Oaks. That's us. And with the likely loss of $2.5 million a year in city revenue as projected by expert consultants, the Duett Center is willing to create financial hardship for the city in order to provide for their own financial gain. I don't believe I've ever seen a large company display such a lack of honesty or integrity as the Duett Center. This initiative is the ultimate bait and switch, in that they obtained signatures on the petition with a false premise of traffic reduction and/or open space, and that alone should have disqualified this from the ballot. Let us hope that the voters will see through this fraud and defeat the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robings. Our next speaker is Sandy Jolie, and she will be followed by Keith Milhouse.
Good evening, Mayor Erwin, council members and staff. I just learned of this opportunity yesterday to come and speak with you, but I felt it was really important to bring this matter to your attention. And it's a matter of big rig trucks parking on our city streets. I've been documenting this for the past six months, both with my camera, with letters to city manager and other staff members, and phones, phone calls to the sheriff almost nightly. I thought my common sense said parking a vehicle meant temporary stopping a vehicle to do business, drop off something, pick up something, et cetera. But these big rig trucks have no business here. They are using our city streets as their own personal storage lots. In fact, one big rig truck company here unhooks its trailers, leaves them on our streets for days and end. I have several issues with this. First is a safety issue. I was hit by a car trying to avoid the back end of one trailer on Hodencamp, and he took off and left. And they're trying to avoid hitting the trailer truck themselves. After that, I called the owner of the company, and he said he pays his taxes, he can park wherever he wants to. The second issue is the trucks are not actually parking on our streets, they're storing their vehicles on our streets. On Hodencamp, two big rig trucks are there right now. They belong to Image Motor Company, although other trucking companies use that street as well. They've been there for five and seven days. The current process is, I call the sheriff's office after 72 hours, they then issue a warning for another 72 hours, they then issue a ticket after another 72 hours, and then after another 72 hours, they may tow the vehicle. Well, that's 12 days, even if it goes according to schedule, and it usually doesn't. On Lombard Street last week, there was a trailer parked in no overnight parking area for eight days straight. On two of those days, there was a mechanical crew using our street as an auto body workshop on that trailer. These truckers all know the laws, they ignore posted signs, or completely avoid the law, and hoping no one will catch them. The 72-hour rule doesn't work at all. Most of the time, like last weekend, they got, one trucking company got eight tickets over the weekend for parking illegally, in no parking at any time zones, and no parking in time zones, because I called the sheriff's department every night to complain. And the sheriff's department is getting angry, too. The truckers also take the tickets off the vehicle, and they put it on another vehicle, which they park on a different street. Okay, my time's up. I brought a lot of pictures of this, of my documentation of it, which I'd like you to have, and thank you very much. I'd really like the big rig trucks to be banned from our city streets.
Okay, Ms. Jolie, the city manager has some comments for you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the full council is aware of this recurring problem, maybe not necessarily the specifics that you articulated, but we do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and the police department will continue to work with you, and Linda Patlastias will, will talk to you in a few minutes, and just keep bringing this to our attention, we'll do the very best we can. The city has wrestled with the 72-hour restriction issue for years and years, and it's tough, but we are aware of the challenge, and we'll keep plugging away, but just keep us in the loop, and we'll keep working with you.
Fantastic.
And your neighbors.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Jolie, Mr. Gillette has a question for you.
Sorry, so sorry.
I, I just wanted to express appreciation for you taking the time to come down and state this here. We've gotten the materials that you've sent in. About two, three weeks ago, there was a meeting with the Public Works Director, Deputy Public Works Director, and a number of people, same issue, based on complaints, this time, the parking and unloading of transport vehicles on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The primary areas, you're absolutely right, Lombard, Hodencamp, West Los Floris, or East Los Floris, near, near Los Cerritos, and then Thousand Oaks Boulevard generally. So it, it covers the gamut, we're aware of it, working with our own ordinances, but primarily state law, and what state law allows is where we run into the difficulty, but don't give up, keep working. We, we need to keep hearing your voice and the voice of other people who are concerned with this, so that we can absolutely keep this in front of the Public Works Director, and the police chief, and those people that are going to help us find a way out of this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just want to say that council members, you've been so fantastic and responsive to every request, I haven't felt like I'm making everybody crazy at all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Keith Milhouse, and he will be followed by Clint Matkovich.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members and staff. My name is Keith Milhouse. I am a council member in the city of Moore Park, a member of the Ventura County Transportation Commission, a member of the Regional Council of the Southern California Association of Governments, and the vice chair of the MetroLink Commute Railroad. I share my titles, not to impress anybody, least myself, but rather to, to show you my experience involved with regional matters. I've been distressed for some time about a small, but very vocal minority in this community that I think reflects poorly on the East County, and they are the people that have engaged in personal attacks on various members of the council. Last week, I was sitting in the audience while I watched this meeting, and I heard someone get up and say, "Four of the five council members don't care about this community, only one does." And I have to share with the people of Thousand Oaks, who must already know this, my experience with those four council members. This is a great city because of the efforts of those four members, and the entire city council. You cannot have a city as great as Thousand Oaks with low crime, a fantastic park system, open space, and a vibrant business community if four out of your five council members are evil, as some of these people say. And I find that the people that usually engage in personal attacks are the ones that can't argue the merits of their case, and I'd ask the people of Thousand Oaks to keep that in mind as you consider your initiative that's coming up. I have the pleasure of serving on the Transportation Commission with Mr. Gillette. I would dare say that Mr. Gillette is the single person responsible in this city, or most responsible, for the improvements on the 23 freeway. If you care about traffic congestion, if you care about improved air quality, you want to move traffic. Mr. Gillette has traveled to Sacramento and Washington DC, and has done a tremendous job in seeing that project come to fruition. Mr. Glancy is involved with the Southern California Association of Governments, and has traveled to Sacramento on multiple occasions to try to get the state to change some laws that are preventing you from initiating speed controls within the city. He does that on his own time. Mayor Erwin meets regularly with members of both Simi Valley and Moore Park, and was the person most responsible for, in this city, for leading the efforts to get those cities together for the first time in a recent public meeting. And my time is getting short, but Mr. Fox has done tremendous work in terms of public safety, and all his leadership throughout the region. So it's very disingenuous for someone to stand up here and contend that those four individuals and their level of service don't care about this community. I know personally, they do. And while I don't have any particular dog in this fight, other than the fact that I have the pleasure of working in your community, I do intend to see that discussions in this community are brought to the level of the merits of a particular proposal. Personal attacks have no business in this East County of Ventura, maybe in other cities, but not here. So, please, I would encourage people to take the merits, I'd encourage them to look at the facts, and I thank the members of this council for their tireless service on behalf of this great community.
Thank you, Mr. Milhouse. Clint Matkovich, followed by Sean Torres.
Speaking of open space, Clint Matkovich, Thousand Oaks, been a resident of Wildwood for 26 years. And I'd like to, I didn't realize till tonight, the 7B was pulled, but I'll like to speak about it anyhow, by reading this statement. Our city is currently in litigation with a developer, Chateau Holdings of Westlake Village. They allege that the wetlands at the end of Alice Drive in Newberry Park were created in 2003 as a result of Caltrans and the city making improvements to the adjacent Burchard Road offering. Chateau Holdings and Centex Homes were planning to subdivide, excuse me, this ecosystem into 100 units in 2006. 100 units in 2006. The property requires a Clean Water Act Section 404 permit, which created a financial hardship for the developers, and in turn, the development plans were withdrawn, at least for right now. Furthermore, the land is classified as a floodplain by the city and floods annually." And I have an aerial photograph from the city, if TOTV will help me out. Yeah, that's all I have for now. The developer in the past has mentioned that they are willing to sell the property. The Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has offered to purchase the land. We have an opportunity here to enhance our open space inventory. And I would like to propose that the legal counsel, or maybe the city, when this item, I understand it's going to be on the agenda on March 18th, may I suggest that some sort of negotiation, some sort of settlement be proposed with the city, the developer, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, so that we can enhance our community, preserve the land, and, because the answer is not going to be found in the courtroom, it's going to be found at the negotiating table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matkovich. Sean Torres, and our last speaker will be Nick Kidway.
Mayor, City Council, Sean Torres from Canibable Home Park, Newberry Park. I've got a picture here, myself, if you could put that up. This is how we feel here at Canibable Home Park. I also feel this is also how we feel with the rest of residents of the mobile home parks here. First and foremost, I'd like to say and reiterate that Canibable Home Park is that we will not give up. Again, I tell you, we will not give up. I'm very ashamed of the city council. You have not listened to the very people that elected you in this city. Three weeks ago, we asked for TPD medium density. Instead, you, the city council, voted three to one against what the people had asked for in our last meeting, with Bill de la Peña dissenting from that. I take off my hat to you, Claudia, for doing what the people wanted. If you remember, the people asked for medium density while the city voted for high density. I am also ashamed of you, Andy Fox, for not even showing up to even vote. To remind everybody, you were here, you were asked to help us out, and you weren't here to vote. I guess that Canibable Home Park residents' conundrum does not bother you at all. I want all the citizens to know that he told the residents not to talk to the press. I'm wondering what he is afraid of. I would also like to remind all the citizens of Thousand Oaks that we have two council members up for reelection in November. Those two people did not vote in favor of the residents here in the city, they have not listened. Let them hear you when it comes to voting. I'm interested in running for city council, and if I do run, I would be in the best interest of what the citizens want here. The council thinks that the mobile home parks in Thousand Oaks are an eyesore, and they do not get revenue from us like they could if they had more units per acre. In fact, I will be, I will make a prediction, that Canibable Home Park will be gone within two years and four months. The city could save us, they gave money to the Lake Shopping Center right next door. We asked for a loan, and that we would pay back. This money plus interest generated from this could be put back in the city fund. I guarantee when our park goes, the rest of the parks will follow. Again, citizens, I say, when we go to, when we go, the other parks will follow. Of course, the city denies that this will happen, so don't forget what they have said. I would also like the citizens of the city to know that we, the residents, will not begin fair market value for our homes. The city has danced around this in their ordinance, and have been, and I have been told this personally from city staff, from the city manager's office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. And our last speaker is Mr. Kidway.
I begin with the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, I'm a resident of Newberry Park, and Mayor Protem Glancy. Last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Some things change, but some things don't. I feel like saying in the audience, "Look, ma, I'm the mayor." I'm still waiting to see a council member have the courage to say, "I raise my hand to say that I'm the chairman of the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency." If TOTV can show the slide that I have, that is the most dreaded booklet, and the slide is from there, which says that, shows two guys saying that blight is everything that we say. Thank you, TOTV. In this city, the Thousand Oaks, the whole Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the entire, almost commercial center of the city, has been blighted by the city fathers and administration since 1979. And what that means is that all the tax increases since 1979 goes into this redevelopment agency, this phantom agency. And out of the goodness of their heart, they give money to 29 agencies, like the Fire Department, and the School District, and the Community College District. And who suffers is taxpayers, because there's no, there's no free lunch. I've invited the city council to come to a meeting of people who are opposed to it, and the leader of the movement is none other than Senator Tom McLean Talk, but none of the council members have any interest. Earlier, it was said that there are four evil council members and one very good one. I find no one on the desk that cares for the taxpayer. You know, I can say that, hopefully, because, I mean, people think that McCain is a liberal, or Mr. Huckabee is the true heir to the Reagan legacy. If this is not flaming liberalism of transferring money from the taxpayers to people like the lakes over here, and not even providing any literature, I mean, right now, there's a vision for the Thousand Oaks in the works. The council has been kind enough to let me be on a committee, and this is the book that I'm dealing with. Guess, I mean, after six meetings, or half a dozen meetings, six months of the Boulevard vision, how much material is there on that? Miss Claudia de la Peña? Nothing. Nothing. And this after the Potrero Park was discussed, and the citizens said, you came up to a good conclusion, they said, involve the citizen in the early process. And so that's why, I mean, people come up over here and say, "Don't criticize the city council. The city is beautiful, the citizens of this, citizens of this Thousand Oaks are the best in the whole world, but not the city government." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, we are moving on to Item 8, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Do we have any questions? Ms. de la Peña?
I'd like to pull Item 8K and move the rest of the consent calendar.
Anybody else? Okay. Vote, please. We do have one speaker card, Mayor.
Oh, I'm very sorry, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Igbal Kidway, Resident Newberry Park Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, it's not your fault, it's, the procedure is wrong. And just watch the council meeting of Hawksnord on the internet, you can see that they have a binder, I mean, and that's where they keep the cards. There's never a problem, but this problem has been here for 14, 15 years, and it will never go away, because the, well, enough, I don't, I want to stay, do not stray, like the city clerk says, and the mayor will help me from straying away from what we are supposed to discuss. Again, this is a City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar, and the emphasis should be the Redevelopment Agency Calendar, which is snuck in, and people don't really know about it. I want to again talk about A, which is minutes. I mean, just about any agency in this wonderful land that you go to, whether it's the Cania School Board meeting, Park District meeting, and this agency also, I mean, there's 50 agendas copies available over here, and I can take three or four if I want to, for the concerned citizens. But there's no minutes available, and this is a common practice. And you folks want to, I think, four of you have been planning commissioners, and the planning commission, every time it meets, has draft minutes available. And you don't even show any draft minutes. I mean, like, right now, it's important, I would like to see the minutes of the, of this. Sure, I could maybe come during the day and get it, but they won't be available until they are completely finalized. And this council body for years used to have it, until there were fights between council members, and this step was taken, that the minutes are not shown to the public until they are finalized. I hope somebody, I mean, this is an election year, I mean, I would like to support council members, but you need to take action, I mean, not just be yes people to the administration, et cetera, or not make any waves. Want to talk about Number D? By the way, the consent calendar is much cleaner than it used to be. I mean, I used to say there was hanky panky, or, I think, maybe those days are going away. Assistant manager likes that. I know the former city manager would be very happy. But I mean, we need good management. I mean, Number D, I mean, you put all these purchasing items and expenditures in the consent calendar. How about, I mean, having bite-sized things on the, on these items? I know that it is said that, well, we discuss this in the budget, and, but that's a three-hour meeting to discuss, you know, two big binders. I mean, the council should give the input on, I mean, you're talking about $300,000 for painting. I mean, if you paint your house and all that, I'm sure you get, you are involved, and the spouse is involved, and children are involved, et cetera. Here, this is a three-year contract that you're giving, just on a voice vote. You should, I mean, and the council meetings are short and all that, you don't have much on the agenda. These things that are being put on the consent calendar, I pray that the council members take the action, do what you have taken the oath of office to, and give your input on some of these things. I mean, we have, you know, Assistant Fire Chief, I mean, I mean, you handle such a big agency, you can give the input. And sure, you do many things outside the council meeting, but some of these things need to be discussed with the input of the citizens. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway, and I apologize again for missing your card. Item 8K.
Item 8K, which is, I believe it was a zoning for mobile home parks for housekeeping purposes, I did vote against the zone change to high density, so I'm going to have to vote against that.
All right, do I have a motion? Mr. Glancy?
Please, Madam Mayor, move 8K.
The motion carries 4-1, and the vote for the remaining calendar was 5-0.
Mr. Glan, Gillette, I'm sorry.
My understanding is correct, Ms. de la Peña moved the consent calendar. She moved it with the exception of 8K, but we haven't voted on the, on the rest of the consent calendar yet.
Oh, we didn't? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then.
I'll move, I'll move the consent.
Okay, thank you. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, we're going to move on to Item 9, is Public Hearings, there are none, and Item 10, Department Reports, Land Use Initiative Right to Vote on Traffic Congestion Written Arguments. And Ms. Lawrence will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On February 5, 2008, City Council adopted and approved several actions related to calling a special election for June 3, 2008, regarding the proposed land use right to vote on traffic congestion initiative. At the February 5 meeting, council deferred a decision until tonight, the option of adopting a resolution authorizing the city council or council members to file a written argument against the measure for the sample ballot. City Council may, at its sole option, decide to authorize city councils itself to write an argument against the measure for the sample ballot. Under the Elections Code, the proponents of the initiative have the right to prepare the argument in favor. For council's information, even if council does not authorize the legislative body or certain members of the council to author an argument against the measure, council may, through adoption of a resolution at a public meeting, take a position on the proposed initiative at a later date outside of the argument slash rebuttal arena. Staff is available for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple notes that, at the February 5 council meeting, I asked to have this issue continued to tonight's agenda, that all of us would have a little more time to take a look at it. This item has to do with city council authorizing the council as a body, or specific council members as individuals, to write a ballot argument against the proposed initiative or Measure B, in compliance with state law. This argument would appear in the sample ballot. After reading through the Independent Impact Analysis Report, and listening to the presentations by the two opposing consulting firms last week, I'm concerned about the initiative's potential impacts to the city's recurring revenues, service levels, especially general fund and public safety service levels, infrastructure, and enough the potential to actually increase the volume of traffic. Since there are bona fide proponents and opponents of the initiative, and the city attorney will be providing an impartial analysis of the initiative, I see no reason for city council to authorize a ballot argument to appear on the sample ballot. This does not preclude city council from taking a formal position on the initiative at a later date outside of what appears to be the sample ballot. The motion is to take no action on this at this time.
Do we have any other comments? Ms. de la Peña? Actually, we also have some public speakers, so I don't know if you want to make a motion right now, or?
I'll withhold the motion then, but the information remains the same.
Ms. de la Peña?
My question, then, later on, would be, what, how do you define "at this time" regarding this particular Item 10A? And the question I have for the city clerk is, does state law only allow you to write an argument against the initiative, or also in favor of an initiative?
Can I jump in and answer that? Part, if you'd like. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council and staff. The state law was changed in 2006, so it makes it very clear that the proponents have the right to file the arguments in favor. So under that section of the law, the council has the right to author arguments against it. And the reason the state law was changed is so that a council couldn't take an initiative by the people and preempt the proponents from writing the argument in favor, and maybe writing an argument that wasn't quite in favor of it. So that's why the law was changed. Under a separate section, the council, if authorizes arguments, then they're given priority. So in this case, because the initiative came from a proponent, from the people, and was not something that the council initiated, are your only authority at this point, well, at any point in time, your only authority under those Election Code sections is to author, authorize authoring an argument against the initiative.
That answers my question. Thank you.
All right, then, we will, we have three public speakers, and our first speaker is Keith Milhouse.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. I have no position on whether you offer an argument against the initiative. We went through this procedure in Moore Park with respect to the Home Depot and the Duett Center. A Home Depot was approved in Moore Park. I voted against the Home Depot in Moore Park, so I understand what you're going through in terms of that analysis. But I'm a little disappointed that the Duett Center has chosen to not weigh their battle in front of this body and the citizens on that issue, and is trying a backdoor attempt at dictating what I believe is poor public policy. There have been attempts to misbrand this particular initiative, it is not a traffic initiative. And I think that's a little bit unclear to everybody out there. The press has labeled it that way, and I think they do a disservice to this community. It is a land use initiative that uses traffic as the guidance for whether a particular land use decision will be made. And whether you have a ballot argument against that or not, I think that's an important consideration for the people to be aware of. Secondly, there was a comment about the increasing of congestion. I think it's very interesting that certain of the proponents who got up and spoke last week of this initiative were the same people who opposed the countywide traffic initiative. That initiative would have created over $5 million by this date for the City of Thousand Oaks to alleviate traffic congestion through synchronization of lights, improvement of intersections. It also would have resulted in the 23 freeway being open now, in both directions. In fact, it would have been open several years ago. So I think the people that get up So I think the people that get up and talk about environmental pollution and the like from traffic congestion should be analyzed and taken with a grain of salt. I think they want traffic congestion, because traffic congestion will result, in their opinion, in land use decisions that are not favorable for the long term for the city. It's basically a way of keeping gridlock so that they can push mass transit and areas, and I believe in mass transit if it's a buildable system, but also land use decisions of no development in any situation. There was an attack last week on the report. Whether you believe in the analyst's report or not, I think the important thing was the statement of the people from Los Robles Hospital. They will close down because they will not take the chance on a ballot measure in this initiative, and will close down certain portions of that hospital because it is not economically effective for them to seismically retrofit the hospital. And as a person who has used that hospital before, that scares me tremendously. And it's not a doom and gloom tactic. The hospital stood up here and said that. And people should use their common sense. While I believe voters would approve good projects when they come forward, I don't believe anybody in their right mind would bring a project forward. It's too expensive. We've seen that from the ballot initiatives and the monies that have been spent, and too uncertain. And as a result, you won't get to that point. So whether you adopt a measure for or against, I at least encourage everyone to take an objective look at this and not accept everything at face value that's being told them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milhouse. Our next speaker is Nick Ickbal-Kidway.
Nick Ickbal-Kidway, as Intermodal Valley Park Director Concerned Cities of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, City Council. First of all, I'd like to ask that if you have special meaning that in this day and age of the internet, that email be sent to those people that want to hear about it. I went on the net, and I must be getting blind, but I did not see the special meeting. I tried to look for the report, and I don't know if I would have even come because it was Super Tuesday, but at least the opportunity should be available. This initiative is probably one of the worst things to happen to this wonderful city. And I am appalled that the, some of the council members are not appalled about this almost ball-faced lie that has been shoved, or will be shoved on people's throat. And the stakes are so high after the economic report that I'm sure you all read the 75 pages. And while, I mean, I love attorneys, and especially city attorneys, in fact, the former, it's unbelievable that a former city attorney with so much experience would take on this case the way he has taken it. But let the city attorneys duel amongst each other. We believe in elected government. We believe in people who are elected will show leadership. I mean, I don't want to bring politics here, but you know, a lot of the nation has been energized by a movement, and the movement is by a man who just talks about hope and about leadership. And that's what I want from my council. I mean, somebody earlier on said that four council members should not be attacked. I mean, they are such great public servants. I mean, this is the chance for you to, to expose this for all these people, because most people don't have the time, especially with the kind of races that are going on, to read and find out that this is done by Duett Center. These crafty foxes already defeated, succeeded in their non-competitive bids in Agora Hills, in Sun Valley. And right now, this is, the reason they got the signature so quickly was because they lied to the people about open space. And some of the people who play on the citizens of this community are again going to use this as a political ploy, that this is about keeping Thousand Oaks the way it was and will be. And so I hope that the council would, would have the courage and the vision and, and give us, the citizens, the hope and the leadership that the citizens of Thousand Oaks deserve, and have one statement that opposes and supports the initiative. And I don't want a minority position. There should really be no minority position. If it's 4-0 or 3-2, I showed you the big binder. We make decisions based on majority. If you have a majority, you don't need a supermajority. That decision should prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And our next speaker is Mario Contini. I'm sorry, I would have introduced you before. I didn't see you sitting there. Mr. Contini is the superintendent of the school district.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I would like to suggest, if you ever want to have about 500 people show up at one of your meetings, we have had a very successful way to do that recently, as you may know. First of all, again, I do want to thank you. I think this council does tremendously wonderful things for not only supporting our schools, but also our community. I've been a resident here for 30 years, and over 30 years now, and I really have witnessed that, so I want to thank you for that. We've reviewed at the school district the report that was submitted to us by Finance Director, Mrs. Candace Hong. And after reviewing it, we did have a number of concerns about this initiative that we'd like to share with you. There's probably more concerns than I'm going to share with you. I'm just going to share about three with you tonight. One is that we see that the initiative has a very strong potential to significantly and adversely affect our schools and our community, and a number of community agencies and organizations that I think all of us have come to appreciate in our, in our town. Specifically with respect to Caneo Valley Unified School District, we see a pretty significant potential for adverse impact on the education of our children, largely through a loss of potential funding, through what property taxes and redevelopment pass-through funds make available, that if this, if this initiative does pass, we are concerned that it could very well reduce those, and I think that was shown in the, in the report. Another issue is, and it's related, all of these are quite related, but we have a very good relationship between the city, the parks, and the school district, thanks to the fine staff and the fine elected officials of all three entities. And we have made an effort for a long time, and want to continue to make that effort, for all of us to work together for the benefit of the community. We are afraid that this, this will jeopardize some of the resources that will help make that happen. We are very concerned about this. We don't see a whole lot of benefit in this initiative, and, you know, we, we encourage you to do what you have to do, but from our point, it doesn't look like it'll serve the benefits of the community nor the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Contini. And our last speaker on this item is Joel Kirschenstein.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Joel Kirschenstein, 2801 Townsgate Consultant to the Caneo Valley Unified School District. As a number of the council realizes, we have been planning an asset management consultant to the district for quite some time now, and we were asked to take a look at the initiative, which we did, as well as studying the staff report. We're not, we haven't completed our analysis, and we'll be making a presentation to the school board at a future date with specific details. But our initial preliminary review of the initiative is that it has a very real potential on anticipated mitigation fees from commercial development to the school district, and the anticipated schedule of fees that they were planning over the next few years. The enrollments, this is a, in essence, is a suppressive initiative, and by suppressing the opportunity for business development in the city, it has an effect on the families that would come in, the employment opportunities, and the related students that would come to the district. And as you know, the district does have declining enrollments, and this would exacerbate that particular issue. The district has been very diligent in its asset management, its real property evaluation, and this, this is a very unusual initiative, that it does not exclude public land transactions, whether it's for the city, the park district, or the, or the school district. And almost all public agencies are engaged in asset management today because of the sweeping budget cuts that are taking place in the state and on a national level. And this is a broad-based initiative that, that really takes away the power of public agencies, as well as the collaborative efforts that the superintendent referred to in, in, between school districts, park districts, and cities to, to help each other in asset management. And you've been through one collaborative effort in the last year that was very, very successful. And there, there was more on the horizon, so our preliminary review is that this should be vociferously opposed. It's bad public policy and has absolutely no benefit to, to public agencies at all. So we'll be making a more detailed report in the future, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. And do we have any other comments from council members? Right, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll restate the motion, that the, the motion is that the council at this time take no action on this item. And as I mentioned before, this does not preclude the City Council from taking a, a formal position on the initiative at a later date outside of what appears on the sample ballot. We're going to hear a lot about this issue in the coming weeks, and I think it's in the council's best interest to listen to all of the information before prematurely taking any type of position on this at this time. So that's the motion.
Any comments to the motion? Ms. Bill Daleopinia?
I would support the motion, as that is the motion that I had proposed last week. I wanted to respond to a couple of things, namely, some of the concerns that were stated tonight. I personally don't think that retrofitting a hospital would act, that this initiative would hurt such a project. I was really taken aback when I heard these claims made that half the hospital would have to be shut down if voters approved this initiative. That is, that made me feel extremely uncomfortable, simply because it, it isn't true, in my opinion. The initiative, just to reiterate as I read it, is asking that the voters decide specific development projects. And I don't really see any harm in letting the voters decide what, what should be built in the city with the remaining 20% of commercial space still left. So that's basically all I have to say.
Okay. Any other comments? Did you have a comment?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, the, while we may not agree or, or disagree with the speakers that come in, I do think it's unfortunate and unfair when folks come in and they, representing organizations, and in this particular case, Mr. Sherman is the chairman and CEO of Los Robles Hospital, who also brought, I believe, 10 or 12 members of his staff, whether intentional or not, to suggest somehow that the CEO of Los Robles Hospital testified in front of the council in a dishonest or disingenuous manner. I don't think is, is consistent, certainly with the council norms. We may disagree, but I, I think most folks in the community would agree that Mr. Sherman is the expert on Los Robles Hospital, not the city council, on what it can and can't do. And so as we move forward, I'd just like to encourage the entire council, as we have speakers come forward, there are going to be folks on both sides of this issue. And for us to comment on whether we agree or disagree, for example, you know, representatives in the Caneo Unified School District, it's not the place of the city council to take exception to the school district's perspective on any given issue in the community. They're an independent elective body, independent staff. And so I just think as we move forward with this initiative, as much as possible, the council could take an objective perspective as we listen to testimony, it's going to serve everybody's interest. But I do believe that it's not appropriate to, in either, again, either on purpose or or not, to insinuate that respected members of the community are somehow testifying or being dishonest or mischaracterizing the facts in areas that they clearly are the expert. These are not issues that are open to debate. They're clearly subject matter experts that are coming in front of the council in some cases, school district officials, CEOs of the hospital. And on the other side, the attorneys for the Duett Center, and the political consultants for the Duett Center, those are folks that are subject matter experts from their perspective. So I think we just need to vote with Mr. Gillette's motion, one way or the other, and move on to the next item.
Mr. Gillette, did you have any further comments?
No, I think I was clear.
All right.
I would like to mention something before, perhaps Mr. Gillette would like to have a final say, just in case. I strongly would like to suggest that any comments made do not attack or impugn the integrity or character of any speaker before the city council, and suggestions to that effect would actually indeed violate the norm. And I do want to remind my colleagues to try to stick to the norm and not misinterpret statements by other council members. Thank you.
All right, we're going to vote now? I beg your pardon?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? Okay, vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good, then. We will move on to our next item, and that is item 10B, the police staffing update, and that report is going to be done by Chief Carpenter. Good evening, Mr. Carpenter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Once again, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Assisting me tonight, I'd just like to introduce a couple of people. I think most of you know Captain Randy Pennis on my left, Sergeant Jim Fryoff, who's ventured away from his desk right now. He's the Crime Prevention Sergeant. And we have also with us tonight three school resource officers. Council's left, Jerry Lopez from Westlake High, Jeff Oswald from Thousand Oaks High School, and Chad Borger from Newbury Park. And they're just, they're just dying to answer any questions that you might have about the success of their program. Each of them are excited about the opportunity to, to work at those schools, so without any further ado, we'll get into our staffing study, update. First off, our recommendation to you, I'll tell you that this report is very similar to the one we did a year ago. It's essentially an update with new facts and figures to kind of fill in the blanks, and some of this I will gloss over to prevent you from falling asleep on me, but I'll also focus on the very important things that we need to discuss. First off, recommendation is direct staff to maintain current police service areas or the current police beat, so no change there. And number two, at the end of fiscal year 2007 and 8, June, or actually June and 30th of 2008, conduct a review of police response times and service levels to determine if it's necessary and financially feasible to add a roving car unit to the 0910 general fund via the next two-year budget cycle. So that's the recommendation. The impacts of that would be, the financial impacts would be, of course, the startup costs, the purchase of another vehicle, some equipment, weapons supplies, and that sort of things, around $60,000. And of course, the reoccurring annual costs supporting a new roving car would be, an 84-hour car estimated to be, at today's dollars, $525,000. Some background on what we're doing tonight, the council will recall in February 2006, council approved 11 top priorities or projects for the calendar year, which, one of which included a review of the additional police beat. Specifically, we focused on the Dos Fiantos area of Newbury Park and its build-out, but the study was initiated really to determine if there was a need for an additional 24-hour car. The study concluded, if you recall, that the calls for service did not support the need for an additional 24-hour beat car in the western portion of the city. As a matter of fact, calls for service between 2003 and '05 remain fairly consistent. The 2006 study did raise, however, the issue of response times in the area, and rather than, staff conducted a rather comprehensive analysis, including a review of citywide calls for service, the workloads, response times, the workloads in individual beats and the reporting districts, to, to determine if whether or not they were equally spread across the board. Council directed staff to do the following. Number one was maintain the current police service. Number one was maintain the current police service areas, which we have done. Number two, work with Intergovernmental Relations Committee to review converting the existing DARE program to a proposed SRO program, which included the net addition of one full-time peace officer, which we did. That was effective July 1, 2007. And if the proposed program, SRO program, was endorsed by the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, work with the school district to share the cost of the enhanced police services to the district. And that was done. The school district agreed to pay for the city's share of the youth outreach program, which was around $80,000. And the city agreed to pay for the full cost of the SRO program, so -- and we'll later on allow Captain Pennis to report on the SRO program, which I'll just cheat here a little bit and say it's an overwhelming success. And we're very happy to have Mr. Contini and Max here tonight from the school district to hopefully collaborate with us on that in the future as well. Conduct further review in 2008 to determine if it was necessary -- oh, excuse me, I skipped one. Add the major crimes internet predator investigator position, which we did. And number five, conduct further review in 2008 to determine if necessary and financially feasible to add a roving car to the next budget cycle. Of course, that's what this report's about tonight. A little more background, and I'll breeze through some of this. We completed a comprehensive analysis of the existing services. We looked at the calls for service as they pertain to the entire city as well as the beat. We looked at the calls for service as it pertained to the reporting district, and I can explain that further if there's a question on that. We looked at response times in particular to emergency calls. We're not so concerned about the non-emergency calls, obviously. We looked at some, at the existing future residential build-out that the city expects in the next 20 years or so. And of course, there are several additional factors that we looked at. The current beat situation that we are operating under, which is a six-beat situation, has the cars in the city of Thousand Oaks have the number nine distinction. Each station has a different number. So ours is nine. And there are six beats, Adam, Boy, Charles, David, Henry, and George. And then each of these beats are paired together. Adam and Boy are sort of paired together, and Charles and David, and then George, Henry. There's an overlap car or a cover car, I guess you should say, that are also assigned to those cars. So there's nine cars right there, in addition to traffic cars and supervising cars and so forth and so on. This beat system continues to work for us. The workload has changed, as you'll find out here or if you've already read the report, minimally, minimally, and we really don't want to affect that at this time. It's working well, so we don't want to change it. As shown in the table that's popping up here next, in 2006, citywide calls for service went down from 41,438 in 2005 to 37,000 in 2006, a significant change. The other years haven't been quite so significant. A review of the 2007 reveals a decrease of another 957 or 2.6% calls for service from 37,000 to 36,000. So this change is so minimal, it doesn't warrant any additional changes in the beat Dos Fientos did experience a slight increase, 59 calls, that's the nine Charles area, but 59 calls spread out through the entire year is once again minimal. Now, some of the data reflect that some of the calls are higher in other areas, as you can see on the chart there. Once again, it's very minimal. It doesn't really impact us. One of the things that we found is, for example, the nine Adam area gets a inordinate number of calls because the station is located in nine Adam land. So the deputies, the public goes to the station to report something, and deputies are called back there to take reports. The nine George deputies, in 2007, 6,600 calls, but they spend roughly the same amount of time on those calls that the nine Boy cars spending on 5,500 calls. It's the type of calls. The nine George area is along the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a lot of businesses. The nine Boy land is in residential. So the actual time spent on calls is relatively the same. Jumping to emergency calls, response times, in 2006, we had 1,735 emergency calls for service out of the 37,000 calls total, which is 4.6% difference. Emergency calls are the highest priority, as you might guess, the ones that are potentially life-threatening. In-progress calls, such as domestic violence, rapes, shots fired, robberies, suicidal subjects, things of that nature. Typically, the officers are responding lights and sirens to get there. Generally, the data shows that the shortest response times correlate to the residential and non-residential areas located along the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The bulk of the calls are occurring in our city, all along the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, all along the freeway corridor. So the deputies tend to spend their time in either responding to calls, dealing with calls, or their own observations of self-initiated activity that occurs along that area. So consequently, from time to time, when they're in that area and they spend their time there, and emergency calls occurs in the outlying area, it does cause an extended In 2000, data shows that during 2006 and '07, emergency calls made up about 4.5% of the overall calls, emergency calls for the year. 2006 results reveal that the police department responded to 1,735 calls for service, which is about -- police officers responded to 1,483% of those calls within six minutes of receiving the call. Our dispatch management tells us that the industry standard is getting to an emergency call in six minutes or less. So about 80% of the time, we're doing that. There is a percentage of time that we're not arriving within that six-minute period of time, and frankly, there's really no way of getting around that. We could add hypothetically five more cars, and they could all be tied up at an individual time on calls, and it's going to require an extended period of time to respond to the scene. Something that affected our response time during the years was, during this past year, was a redeployment of our VIPs. We had a period of time for several months where we redeployed them to work on some other things, to help us with some other areas, and we pulled them off of taking the bulk of our reports, which put patrol cars taking those reports. And dispatch actually pointed out to us that we were causing extended response times through this period of time because we did not have patrol cars available. So we took them off of that special detail and back onto regular deployment. And I mentioned earlier that we looked a little bit at future citywide redevelopment and impacts on police services. Our population is currently around 127,700. The remaining residential build-out is expected to occur very slowly over the next 20 years, anticipated to build out around '20, '30, at an estimated amount of 132,000 people. Well, that's only about six more thousand residents, four more thousand residents to our community, and we think that'll be impact, impact us minimally. The same thing goes for the future commercial industrial. It's about 80% build-out, as I understand, with about 6 million square feet of commercial industrial space left or evenly split space. I think the real impact on us is unclear, but at the same time, it's such a small amount, I think that over this period of time, it will be minimal to us. Now, I won't get into all the additional factors because those are the things that we talked about last year, about narrowing of roads, the police station being in the north end of the city, speed bumps, hilly topography, and things of that nature that impact our ability to respond. We also talked about our updated staffing alternatives. The city has shifted its maintenance, shifted to a maintenance-oriented type community, focused on quality of life issues as opposed to growing as much as it used to in years past. So our focus has shifted as well. We are looking internally, looking to improve on crime prevention and including a stronger emphasis on youth and eliminating crimes that youth might be involved in. And so with that, we recommended last year the school resource officer program. So this update includes not only an analysis of whether or not we need to expand our beats, but also the progress of our school resource officer program. So I'd like for Captain Pennis to jump in here and talk about SROs.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. When we started this program, we answered a couple of questions. Our goal was to answer a couple of questions. Are the schools safe? And do kids feel safe at the schools? I can throw out, and I will, discuss some numbers that we use as a benchmark, but that's really what we're asking, what we're answering here, and that's really what we're dealing with. And we use a lot of different groups as a report card. We use the school district, we use parents, and most importantly, we use the kids at the school. We started a solid foundation initially, and that was with the school district. The chief mentioned Max Beeman, he's the director of secondary ed who is here. We met formally, we met informally. Internally, we met weekly, monthly, and then at Christmas break. What are we doing right? What do we need to change? And we looked at all those issues. On calls for service, in 2006, there were 142 calls for service to the schools. In 2007, there were 86. It's over 40%. We expected that. Newbury Park High, they had a little over 37% reduction calls for service. Thousand Oaks High, a little over 33%. Westlake High, very high, at a little over 58%. And Canada Valley High, 25%. We expected that because we had the officer on the campus. Now, with that, it allowed the patrol officers to do other police work, to do proactive police work. So it has another major impact on the community. Throughout this program, of course, we want to prevent crime. We want to be that immediate resource for the school district. It's been interesting, in all three of the schools, although high schools are very much the same, yet these three high schools are very much different, too. They all have different needs, all very unique. Fights went down on the campuses, on all three campuses. You would think expulsions might go up. Expulsions went down on the campuses, and we attribute that to the officer being on the campus. And it's interesting, also, from the parents' perspective, they're an immediate resource. And oftentimes, you're not going to call the police, but they have that officer they can talk to on the campus. Many times, these three officers have contacts with kids on the campus, and you can see, you'll notice that this is a typical, my uniform is a typical uniform, you know, without the Sam Brown gear. They have the polo shirt, which is a lot softer, it's a lot softer approach. That was by design with the school district and us. It makes the officers more approachable on campus. And many kids talk to them from problems at home, substance abuse issues, relationship problems, to career goals. So that constant on the campus has also had a big impact for those relationships, and the relationship with the parents, and the relationship for teachers. They can ask them to come in and chat with the class, which they have done, and that relationship with the administration. So that resource has been very critical in the program. We see a lot of success with that. I want to talk a little bit about the self-initiated activity. And you look at these numbers, and you look at 2006, well, what is self-initiated activity? That could be something from an arrest, it could be a field interview card, take a name, address, and some other information, that type of contact. It could be a truancy citation, those types of contacts. In 2006, there were 173. In '07, last year, 365. Obviously, a huge increase, but you're going to have that because there's an officer on campus dealing with the issues. We look forward to the next six months. We'll continue to meet with our officers, with the school staff. We feel we're going in the right direction, not only for the safe schools, but it impacts other areas of the community, our relationship with Canada Rec Park. Two of the schools, Newbury Park High and Thousand Oaks High, have a park that borders them. So it has expanded, and it's overall, it's had, the whole umbrella effect has had a major impact on the community.
Thank you, Randy. The internet predator detective position was approved also by council, and we actually didn't take delivery of our detective until around October, by the time new budget cycle and selection process and able to get a transfer in. He came to work in October, and then immediately, we had to get into some schools, and so it was about 160 hours of school specialized training to bring him up to date for working. Since that time, and the numbers have actually changed from the report, because if you've seen in the news, we've made some other arrests, but four arrests for luring a child, two arrests for child pornography, and one child abduction case. Felony filings on six of those seven cases with the district attorney's office. Every day, he's assisting with investigations and helping patrol when they receive information about child pornography on someone's computer. He's working regularly with about 30 suspects, working undercover, so to speak, online. As you saw in the news media, he made an arrest, and the detectives that work with him made an arrest last night. They served a search warrant today. I have another search warrant pending for tomorrow that pertains to child pornography. And so this officer is very, is quite busy. We have a, our sexual assault unit consists of four people, and he's just one of the four, and they share the workload significantly. So as I said before, in conclusion, our recommendation is to keep staffing the same. We don't need any additional officers at this time. We don't need an additional beat. We, of course, looking forward to reevaluating that this time next year. We're very excited about the success of our SRO program, and these three guys in particular over here are a successful, huge part of the success of that program. They really embrace their job and doing a wonderful job over there, and we appreciate it. And the same thing goes for our internet predator detective, and he's at a college class tonight and couldn't be here. We would have had him here. So with respect to the future of adding a roving car, we look forward to evaluating that this time next year and make that recommendation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments first. The part that Captain Pennis talked about, the calls for service and the self-initiated activity, when you're talking about 2007, you're really only talking about a third of the year because they didn't start at the beginning of the year. So those numbers would be much more dramatic even than what you have listed in the report.
Correct, because we implemented the program in August of 2007. School starts the latter part of August, first part of September, so it is really the last quarter of the year.
So I know the SROs are doing a great job, and I have kids in the schools, and I hear nothing but rave reviews for all three of you. So great program, and I'm really happy that the council decided to go forward with that. Mr. Fox?
Thanks. Three, two questions, and then just an observation. You know, we had a lot of discussion about the SRO program, and it was a good debate on that. But I think, based on this report, it has to be said that it's really undisputed by any measurable standard, this was the right move for our community, and a lot of credit goes to the guys that are doing the work. Segue into a question I have, on the SIAs, it just jumped out at me, and I was just curious if there is a reason why Thousand Oaks High School is, in terms of percentage, just completely off the radar compared to the other schools. It's, I'm sure you asked the same question, there must be some reason for that.
Randy?
Well, there is. You have, I said all the schools are the same and vastly different. You have a different protocol at each school, a different administration, a different feeling on how issues will be handled, and that's why you have the varying numbers. And I know it's drastically different, but I asked the very same question as you mentioned, Councilman, and that's what, that's the answer, the direction we went to, looking at the calls for service, looking at the issues of the school. To give you a little bit more information, issues at high schools are cyclic. If we've had a lot of police problems, or there's been, have been issues at a particular middle school, we know that following year, that theater school, whatever high school it goes to, will see some of those same problems at that high school. The next year, it could be a very different school. It just depends on the middle school. So we look at that as well, and that impacts the numbers. But how the administration, how their philosophy, how they want to handle things, has an impact on the numbers.
All right, well, am I, is that, would it be incorrect then to, based on that, to indicate that the, if self-initiated activity, now, contacts generated by the SRO, that's how that works, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So does the SRO, obviously, they work collaboratively with the school administration in partnership, but is it, would it be an incorrect assumption that the SRO is, in a sense, how do I phrase this? There's influence created on the SRO on how the individual school principals or school administrators want to handle a given issue that would be reflected in the statistics?
Yes, there could, there could certainly be, yes, absolutely.
And that's okay. Then my follow-up question is, and I'm sure this is being evaluated, but council has to ask this, is the program being utilized to its fullest extent? I mean, these are, these are pretty dramatic changes in percentage, 163% for Newbury Park for the benefit of the community, 216% Westlake High School, 800% for School, 800 percent for Canal Valley School, 6 percent for Thousand Oaks High School. It's, you know.
I'll let Jim take a shot at explaining it.
In addition, in addition to the individual policies for the schools and how they utilize the SRO program, one thing that the numbers don't show is, it's just showing you a percentage change. Thousand Oaks actually had a disproportionate number of higher level of contacts in '06 than the other two schools. So when you look at the overall increases, his numbers are very similar as the other schools. It was just that, probably because of the location of the school and more frequent contacts with law enforcement, had a higher level of self-initiated activity to begin with as opposed to Newbury Park and Westlake, which are in the outer reaches.
Okay, so that would explain it. In terms of workload and contacts and use of the program, that's, if we were looking, what, well, what would be in terms of, well, you don't have anything to compare it to because it's a new program. But I guess my question is, if you look at all three high schools, is the, is the program being utilized essentially the same amount? I don't know how to frame that question, but...
Well, you asked a question earlier, Councilman, about, is, if you ask this correctly, about enforcement. Enforcement's the same in all three. The philosophy may be different on some other offenses or other issues that occur at the school. But enforcement across all three, we enforce the law, and there's not a difference for that part of it.
All right. Then my final question, I think actually is for Candace, or maybe Mr. Mitnick can address this. In the first page of the report, it talks about the direct startup costs associated with a additional roving car unit. Car weapons supplies, equipment, is $60,000. And then the reoccurring annual cost of supporting a new roving car, including constant staffing for an 84-hour car, is estimated at $525,000. How's that costed out?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, police officers are expensive. No, Dennis Carpenter can explain to you how the 84-hour calculation works, how many officers are involved, salary and benefits for that figure, but Dennis can explain exactly how many bodies...
Is that an around-the-clock car?
No, that's a 12-hour a day, seven-day a week. So it would be, this is the step one, if you're going to add a car, rather than add a beat 24 hours a day, you add an 84-hour car, which gives you 12 hours a day coverage. And then you decide, you want it to come in at 10 o'clock in the morning, you want it to come in at 7 o'clock in the morning, you want it to start at noon, and then finish 12 hours later.
And how many officers does that equate to?
Two, essentially two. It's, you know, I don't have the exact formula, and it's two points, something or other, but I don't, I can't answer the question completely for you.
All right, so it's gone up a lot, and over the years, a police officer used to cost around $120,000 bucks.
Well, that would be one of these guys who doesn't have any feel behind. The 12-hour car is going to have to have a constant officer in that car.
Right.
So the costs go up.
Okay. And, all right.
If I could interject. The cost of a police officer is about $200,000 a year, total salary, benefits, everything rolled up. And then you have the other operating costs in terms of the cost of petrol and, you know, all the other equipment.
Right.
Police officers are expensive.
Yeah, it's gone up. Okay, very good. Good report.
Miss Spilvedo, opinion?
Thank you. Good evening, Chief, and Captain Pentis, and Jim. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have a question regarding the police calls for service, CFS. To what do you attribute the decline in CFS?
It's very difficult to put an exact reason as to why they continually stopped. I mean, the economy has been good. It's currently changing, so we may see a difference in calls for service. Randy does a study on this for the Patrol Division, so I might toss this to him.
We asked that very same question. And there's a nationwide trend of a reduction of calls for service. And the other part of this are how the calls, and that has changed the past five years, how the calls for service are captured in the computer system, in the CAD system. There's been three different changes now, so that has impacted the numbers. Because you saw, and the numbers were pretty consistent, and then a drop-off. And there was another change of how they're captured. Because we look at the same issue on a call for service. Dispatch, the communications center, gets many, many calls, thousands of calls. Now, there's a portion of those that are calls for service. Those calls for service that we count are actually definitely getting a call on the radio or on the computer, and they're responding to. That's a call for service for us. So how they're calculated, and how they've counted, they've been counted over the years has changed. But there is a nationwide trend, talking to our communications manager, with a reduction of calls for service.
Interesting. Also, in case I missed it, I'm not sure, who are the three officers that are sitting in the audience tonight? Are those the SROs?
Yes.
They are. Okay. Good evening, and thank you very much for doing a wonderful job. Obviously, the work you're doing is having a tremendous effect on our local schools. Thank you. Detective Predator as well.
He's not here. No, this is, this is Jim, probably off the, Sergeant from Crime Division.
You as well, thank you.
All right, Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. He only gets one-fourth of the time. Either Chief or Captain Pentis, how many of the communities, cities within Ventura County use SROs now at this point?
Well, Camarillo Station has one at Camarillo High School, and Rio Mesa, that's actually out of the headquarters station of Ventura. Ojai has one at their high school. Moore Park has one. I have to add them up for you. I should, Fillmore.
All the contract cities.
So all the contract cities have them. And then Ventura, I just, I understand, just started with one and are hoping to immediately increase it to three. I believe Oxnard has them as well, but I'm not certain. Simi has them? Okay. Three at Camarillo, he says. Okay.
Okay, seems like it's a very well-attended program with very good results. Typically, just to, you know, we talked about this when we talked about SRO last year, but at this point, do you have any feel for primarily how these positions are funded?
No, I don't.
That's fair.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Who pays for them?
Well, their city, you mean the other cities? Camarillo, I think, shares with the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department pays for the El Rio position. Randy, you have to respond to the West County side. I don't know on all of them.
And the city of Ventura, they're going to share the costs with the police department and the school district, a 50-50 share.
The contract pays for it in Fillmore?
Yes.
Yeah, the city contract pays for it in Fillmore, and same in Moore Park.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice report, and thank you for all that you guys do.
Do you feel neglected way down there? Mr. Gillette, do you have some comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
I had just a couple of things, and I'll be quick. First of all, reference the SRO program. Last summer, I had occasion to, at a, at an activity, to discuss the SRO program and its vehicles with Mr. Contini, the school superintendent, the superintendent of Schools, Canal Valley Unified School District. And I, at his request, I brought that forward, and the, thanks to Chief Carpenter, the responsiveness of the system. The vehicles used now by the SROs are distinctively identified as SRO vehicles. An interesting thing happens, you drive by a school, and you see a marked active uniform police car. People tend to look at it as there's some sort of an emergency, there's something wrong, and it has, it tends to have a negative, a negative identification or connotation where that you drive by and you see, as the DARE vehicles were, and now the SRO vehicles. That is, that's an asset there to help and oversee potential issues and provide a service to the school. So my understanding is that it's been well-received, but it does clearly denote that those assets now are working on our school site. So thank you, Chief Carpenter, and thanks to that system that worked. The other thing I wanted to ask, reference, non-assigned beat assets, traffic, the other thing specifically, do you now have, are you up to the nine motors that we had talked about a year or so ago with the supervising sergeant of the unit being a motor officer also? Is that...
That's correct.
So we did get out of that a ninth, was that correct, a ninth motor?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a, is there a way, a way of quantifying a percentage of emergency responses from those assets? Not necessarily the beat vehicles, but first of it, when the system seeks out first available asset for an emergency, do you, are you able to quantify or account for that in your overall accounting of assets and deployment and response time?
Yes, we can. We did not include that in the report because they're not primary response units, they're not always available to respond. The beat cars have the primary responsibility. During the past year, we made it a number-one priority to engage everyone in the responsibility of getting to emergency calls as quickly as possible. And so that was our objective, to include detectives, traffic, accident investigators. When a call went out that needed emergency response, that if they were nearby, that they would go to the scene and assist, and at least get things stabilized until the beat car could arrive and take over. But in terms of quantifying it, we can do that. We haven't done that for this report.
Okay, I just, the main thing, that's such a valuable asset, and those assets, for the most part, are available during the primary need times, 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, or whatever it is. And I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost on us, that we have another whole layer of assets that are out there and are working for us. One other question I wanted to ask, in one of the fire reports, there was a comment about the regular and routine response of LA County resources into the city to back up fire assets and what have you. And I know some time ago, on occasion, for certain types of emergencies, LA County would respond in and vice versa. Does that kind of thing still happen? And also, does it also happen with the county pockets that we have around us that have county assets deployed to them? How does that cooperative and mutual, mutual aid system, how is that working, or does it work?
It works extremely well. It continues to work on an as-needed basis. Just the other day, stolen car in the vicinity of the county line, and LA County sheriffs and Ventura County sheriffs and Thousand Oaks PD officers worked, you know, collectively to find the stolen vehicle. The county cars respond to calls in the city on a regular basis. And from time to time, the city cars respond to calls in the county, emergency calls to assist them when there's no other vehicle available. It's part of the huge advantage to contract policing is that we get to share resources when the emergencies hit. Recently, we've had our share of emergencies where cars from Moore Park, cars from the county area around Moore Park, cars from Camarillo were sent into Thousand Oaks to deal or assist with large crowds, large crowds, and situations that our beat cars couldn't handle. So frequently, it goes back and forth. We send cars down the hill into Camarillo, and vice versa, they send them up here.
Okay, thank you very much. I just think it's important for us to understand that there's a big picture here, and there are a lot of things going on, some of which we don't hear about on a regular basis. So I appreciate that kind of an update. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments?
We'll relinquish this end of the dais again.
I was giving you the opportunity, start at that end. Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Gillette?
To receive and file?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitnick had something to say.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to add, before you go ahead and vote to receive this report, to acknowledge the spirit of cooperation. It was hinted at earlier, but I just wanted to point out the tremendous spirit of cooperation between the county and the city, and the school district, and the park district, because there's the youth outreach program, which we didn't touch on here, it's mentioned in the report. I wanted to personally acknowledge and thank Chief Carpenter for his tremendous cooperation and teamwork, and working with all the city departments in implementing council's desires and wishes, going back over a year ago, maybe two years ago, to take a look at the DARE program. And there were some challenges with that. And Mario, when you came on as the new superintendent, there were some challenges, which is not unique to Thousand Oaks, this happens everywhere else where you look at the DARE program. And I think it's proven its worth in the short period, with these gentlemen here, the three SRO officers, done an outstanding job, so that's working really well. And also recognize Randy Pentis, and the entire Thousand Oaks Police Department. And also, we shouldn't forget Sheriff Bob Brooks, because he's been very supportive of this effort, so we need to point that out. And then with Mario Contini, the superintendent, and Jeff Barstad, the assistant superintendent, Max Beeman, and the former principal of Newbury Park High School, and the three current high school principals need to be acknowledged, and then city staff from the finance department all the way through the city attorney's offices, and so on. So I just wanted to point out, we're working very well together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Back to Councilmember Gillette.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, with the motion, recommend that we're all busy, and I know you all have a lot of things to do, but if you ever have occasion and you want some excellent reading, if you haven't had a chance to read the methodology used in the sheriff's contracting, the detail that it goes into, we will never get into the type of situation with the sheriff's department contract that we have gotten into with the fire protection district. Because of the kind of detail and methodology that's used in costing out, at one time, and I'm assuming it's still in it, they even costed out the cost of flashlight batteries, initial cost, and how long they should last. So a lot of people have worked very hard for the 40-some years that the contract's been in place to make sure that we receive the absolute best possible service, i.e. safest city in the United States, which is fun to say at a crime prevention meeting when you're introducing yourself, that's where you're from, to the most cost-effective policing services that have been given anywhere. And congratulations to all of you that implement that every day, but congratulations to the residents of this city that have seen that that type of service is provided. With that in mind, I'll move the staff recommendation to direct staff, both one and two. Thank you.
Comments on the motion? Vote, please. Motion carries 5-0. All right, we are going to move on to our third department to report, item 10C, and that is tract 5471, overhead utility line undergrounding. And Mark Watkins, our Public Works Director, will be presenting the report. Ready.
Okay, sorry, I didn't want to start too much early.
We've called you already. We're waiting.
I'm sorry, I'm ready. May everyone, members of the council, members of the community, the next item before you is consideration of an undergrounding project at Hillcrest Drive and Rancho Road, tract 5471. Quick background on this project, this is the Rancho Sereno Project, located at the intersection of Hillcrest Rancho on the southeast corner. 22-home townhouse condominium. Tentative map was approved in this project, 2005, grading started late 2006, and then the building construction started just under a year ago. Vicinity map just shows where it is in town, and the location map just generally where the project is located. Just wanted to go through a quick undergrounding overview, how undergrounding projects are accomplished. All the undergrounding projects fall under the CPUC rules. They're referred to as Rule 20 projects. Those projects are broken down into Rule 20A, 20B, and 20C. Rule 20A projects are those projects that are prioritized by the city and funded by Southern California Edison with a portion of the utility bill that you pay every month. So money goes from those projects into an account with the city's name on it, and then those monies are accumulated over a number of years so that we can build a project. An example of that would be the recent Moore Park Road undergrounding, which Mr. Spurgeon will talk about briefly. Rule 20B projects are projects that are funded using private funds, and they are given a ratepayer subsidy. That subsidy is equal to the cost of an equivalent overhead system and the cost of removal of the existing overhead system. Generally speaking, it's considered to be about a 20 percent subsidy to the project. That subsidy is also paid out of the utility bills that you pay, but the remainder of the project is funded from whoever the... the project is funded from whoever the project proponent is, that could be the city or private developer. And then the smaller projects are the Rule 20C projects, those are entirely privately funded or, and don't receive any sort of subsidy. Developers are typically required, per the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, to underground adjacent overhead utility lines. And then, at times, it is not feasible for them to do so, and so in those times, they will get what's referred to as an underground utility waiver, and then they cash out in lieu of the undergrounding. Those funds are what the city then uses to try to augment other funds and try to capitalize on undergrounding projects that do occur. We try to maximize the amount of undergrounding that can happen on other projects by leveraging those limited funds to try to get an additional pole here and there. And so with that, I'll have Mr. Spurgeon go through this current project, and then we'll answer any questions.
Thank you. This project was conditioned to underground the overhead lines surrounding the project. The developer did obtain a underground utility waiver for one of the poles at the intersection in conjunction with the undergrounding that they would have to, that they would have to do. But independently, the developer decided to pursue a larger undergrounding project that would be beyond the scope of what he would have to do as a standalone project in order to qualify for Rule 20B subsidies. And that was, that was started about, about a year ago. In October of last year, the city received from the developer a proposal for what the city's contribution would be for that larger project totaling $359,000. The city reviewed that, we kind of made a counterproposal to that. There was a number of meetings and discussions with the developer and his representative. And it was, it became apparent, apparently clear that the developer was not willing to negotiate any, any, any further payment on his behalf. This location map kind of summarizes the developer's standalone project, which is shown in yellow. The yellow lines would be what the developer would have to underground. It's about a little less than 900 feet of overhead lines that would be undergrounded. I think there's four poles that would be removed and a couple of poles that get relocated to the edge of his development. The red lines are what the city would be responsible for as part of the larger Rule 20B project. This represents about 400 feet of overhead lines that would be undergrounded, 260 feet of which are within the public right-of-way. And there would be an additional two poles removed as part of the larger project. This is a photo looking along Hillcrest toward the intersection of Rancho Road. The pole that you see on the right would be one of the poles that would be removed as part of the larger project that the city would be paying for. The lines crossing diagonally across the intersection would also be removed. And this is looking north toward Hillcrest from Rancho Road. The pole to the left would also be removed as part of the larger project, city's responsibility. And again, you can see those, those lines kind of crossing diagonally over through the I was the city's project manager for the Moore Park Road Rule 20A project, and every time I drive that road now, I, it gives me a great deal of satisfaction because of how fantastic it looks without all those lines up there. And so I can tell you that we, we're always looking for opportunities to partner with developers to extend these undergrounding projects throughout the city. There are limited funds available to do this. Currently, there's about $400,000 available in, in our C1 undergrounding account. And for a number of reasons, the utility companies have told us that this particular intersection, Hillcrest and Rancho Road, is complicated and therefore quite a bit more costly than maybe other, other locations. With that being said, we still, staff looks at and tries to weigh the benefits of an undergrounding project versus the costs. And I quantify the benefit for an undergrounding project as how, how long, how many feet of overhead existing lines would be undergrounded within the public right-of-way, and I compare that to the costs. I will say that if this particular intersection is not undergrounded at this time with this development, it probably won't be undergrounded for the foreseeable future. So, I do want to make that statement. This slide shows some of the metrics that I use to help evaluate, you know, our recommendation on this particular proposal. There's a number of projects in white text here that are either already constructed, under design, under construction, or proposed. And again, the metric being what I consider the public benefit, which is the length of existing overhead lines within the right-of-way that would be undergrounded, divided into the cost, the city's participation amount, to get a unit cost, a dollar per foot. And you can see in red, the proposal by the developer is significantly higher unit cost. Just to briefly go over the, the projects that we're comparing to, you're all familiar with the Rule 20A Moore Park Road project. This was completed in June of 2005, a little less than a mile and a half of overhead lines were undergrounded between Wilbur Road and Columbia at a cost of about $4.7 million. But these lines included, the lines included were two circuits of the 66,000-volt high, you know, high voltage transmission lines, distribution lines on both sides of the streets, as well as connecting residents along both sides of the street with an underground service. And again, the, the unit cost for this, which is probably the biggest project that, that I'll ever be involved in, was about $650 per foot. This undergrounding project on Hillcrest is in the approved CIP. We are currently under design with this project. We're working with two different developers. You can see there's two segments of yellow line here that represent the developer's responsibility. And then the city is going to kind of fill in the gap, and we end up with a, about a half mile, actually over a half mile of, of overhead lines along Hillcrest Drive that do get undergrounded. Our responsibility is about, for about 1,500 feet of overhead lines, about eight poles. Our budgeted amount at this point is 310,000, so that's about $207 a foot for this project. This one at Reno and Kimber is, is under construction, and the reimbursement agreement with the developer was approved by council last November. Our contribution of $143,000 undergrounds about 590 feet, three poles are removed, about $243 per linear foot's the unit cost. Again, this one's currently under construction. And then lastly, this one is a new project that's kind of just, just come up in the last month or so. We are working with the developer of the commercial center there at Old Canal Road and Wendy Drive, that's currently under construction, working with them to extend the undergrounding that they have to do along Old Canal Road, to take that through the intersection along the two existing gas station properties. About 415 feet additional undergrounding, three additional poles would be removed as part of the city participation here. Our estimated cost at this point, you know, we're just at the planning stages, but it's about $130,000 for the 15, 415 feet, about $313 a linear foot.
And so with that, we'll kind of close here with, just to summary of the cost proposals. This was all laid out in the staff report, but in essence, the, the final proposal from the developer, the total cost is 602,000. That's a cost that the developer came up with. We've been using those numbers, those costs, if we're going to move forward, it still needs to be verified with, with estimates and with actual construction costs. But the proposal that they had was for the city to contribute about 60% of that, or 359,000, and the developer sharing the cost at about 40%, or 243,000. What city staff did was go through and look at that and try to determine how we would distribute the cost, and we did it based on a per-linial foot of conduit, the conduit that was required to underground that portion within the public right-of-way versus that, which was required by the undergrounding of the project itself, and came up with a proposal with the city sharing about 30% of the cost at 178,000, and the developer at about 70% of the cost, or 424. The 178,000 is still a very high number, that's about $800 a foot. As Mr. Spurgeon said, we paid about 650 or so on Moore Park, which included two transmission circuits, distribution circuits, and all of the undergrounding of all the services to the homes and new service panels on the homes. And so that, up until that point, had been our high watermark, so this is still high. One of the things that you task us with and that we take seriously is looking for some cost effectiveness and trying to leverage the limited amount of funds, and that's what we've done with some of these other projects. We're not against the undergrounding project, we'd like to see the lines in this intersection undergrounded, and, and we try to leverage those funds to underground as much as we can with any of the other projects. But we were not able to come to terms in the negotiations with this particular developer in regards to what we considered a fair share of the cost. And so because of that, we were forced to recommend denial of the city's contribution and going forward with the proposal as the developer has submitted it. I just wanted to also note that there are, there was no public notice from the city. The developer did send out a letter to some of the surrounding neighbors, they may comment on that as to what the distribution of that was. There's two responses that are in your green packet tonight. Both those responses were in favor of the staff's recommendation and against the undergrounding. And so with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
I, I think they weren't against the undergrounding, they were against...
Against the city's contribution, sorry.
Contribution being higher than that. And then upfront, I also want to disclose that a couple of months ago, I did have a conversation with Mr. Rosenthal and his representative. Do we have comments? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watkins, you said that Edison Company has said that this is, for some reason, an extreme, I forget the exact word, this is an extremely expensive location. What's driving that cost? But do, do we know why it's so much more expensive per foot than anything else that's been done?
Well, I think, what we're told is that, based on the other utilities that are already in the ground, anytime you do an underground project, if we're doing water lines or sewer lines, depending upon what else is in that area that you're forced to go around, those other underground utilities where you can locate or cannot locate conduits will affect the cost. Also, if you're in an intersection or if you're on a busy street, then you have to have traffic control, and depending upon where it is that that conduit's ultimately located, impacts how easy it is to do traffic control, how easy it is to do the construction. So that's, that's what we're being told is, is driving those costs. I don't know when the developer can comment, whether they've got actual construction bids yet, or whether we're still working off of estimates on this, and whether, whether those numbers are, have, have yet really been pinned down.
Well, in, in listening to the presentation, I appreciate the analysis, Mr. Spurgeon, the, all of the work that you've done on getting, getting actual cost figures to get those, something that we can look at per dollar foot if, as a yardstick. I'm, I'm particularly concerned with your comment. You said that if this isn't done now, I think you said it will be put off for some time. And in essence, if it isn't done now, given the age of, of the development in that area and what's there, what I heard you saying is, it'll never get done. It'll, it'll just be there. And, and the, the resulting outages from poles that have wires on them and all of the other related things, the aesthetics and everything else, it'll be there. And I, when I think about that, I think about the missed opportunity at Old Canal Road with the, the condominium project, one of the major gateways into the city, and we lost it. We lost an opportunity because the Edison Company couldn't move fast enough, if I remember the, the primary reason, to come up with the resources or come up with whatever to make that happen. And so I, each time I drove by there and I saw them lifting those Edison poles out of their current path, and then just putting in new poles, X number of feet aside, and, and creating, again, one of our major gateways lined with poles that will now be there, they'll be there forever. So I, I think in this particular instance, I have to weigh, yeah, the cost is critically important, it is a high number. I, I'm not quite convinced yet, as I listen, if the cost is what it is, but if that's the fact, I'm, I'm grossly, significantly concerned about the missed opportunity, what this will represent, and leave this blight in an area like that forever. So, we have an opportunity here to participate with the developer. If, if you're satisfied that the costs, these are the developer's costs, all, all of the cost information is factual and supportive, then maybe in this case, it is $1,300 a foot to get rid of this ISOAR and get rid of this potential inconvenience to a larger area of the city that's served by the lines that are on those poles. Thank you.
Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watkins or Mr. Spurgeon, on one of your earlier slides in your presentation, you had yellow lines and red lines. The yellow lines are the, pardon me, the frontages that the developer is conditioned to underground, is that true?
Yes.
The red line is that lineage that the city said they would be responsible for if they went into a 20B?
Yes.
And the dollar amounts of those two segments are 359,000, 178,000, is that correct?
Well, yeah, depending on who's, yeah, right, on whose proposal you're looking at. And, and, and that kind of partially answers, I think, one of the questions Councilmember Gillette threw up also, which is, are we satisfied with the cost? And the answer is, no, we're not satisfied with the cost. We haven't verified, nor do we agree with the costs as they're shown. And so we haven't been able to come to agreement on what those costs represent.
If we were to just leave it as the condition on the developer to underground those lines that are surrounding the property or that are on the two sides of the, of the property, how long would it take to accumulate sufficient funds? Or, you know, if we didn't want to commit any of the 400 that we've got right now, how long would it take to, to accumulate sufficient additional funds for a 20A?
I, I think we get about $400,000 per year under 20A. And so if, if this was the location we chose to dedicate 20A funds to, presumably, you'd be looking at one year's worth of, worth of accumulation.
Okay, thank you. I, it seems like there's been a lack of adequate communication between the staff and the applicant. Is that a fair assessment?
There's been a fair effort at communication, I don't know if it's been adequate.
Well, you're concerning, or considering that there seems to be a fairly major splitting point here. It seems like perhaps the communication didn't quite get what is usually desired.
We, we ultimately came to a loggerhead where it was made very clear to us that no further discussions were needed, that there was no room for negotiation, and we were given a take it or leave it proposal.
There's an invitation. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You stated that in this case, the developer decided to pursue a larger undergrounding, undergrounding project?
Yes.
And turns out that it is approximately $600,000, correct?
That's the amount of the total project, I, yes.
And when this project was approved, was it approved with the knowledge that the developer would be responsible for the cost of undergrounding?
The developer's responsible for the cost of undergrounding, a portion of that. They're responsible for undergrounding that portion that is adjacent to theirs.
Correct.
$600,000 goes beyond what they're responsible for.
It, what would happen if the city were to go with staff recommendation? Because obviously, it would set a precedent for other projects in the future where developers could come and say, we would like to have a bigger share paid by the city, by the taxpayers for undergrounding certain utilities. What would happen to this particular project if the city were to accept staff's recommendation?
The, the portions that are shown in yellow on that, that previous slide would continue to be undergrounded. The portions that are shown in red would remain as existing overhead lines. So there's two poles that would remain, and then the lines, and, and the, the most offensive from an aesthetic perspective is the, the large cable that's strung kind of diagonally across the intersection. And so there is, if you've been out there to look, there's one that's kind of going diagonally across the intersection, that one would remain, and that's probably... That one would remain, and that's probably the most kind of aesthetically offensive of those.
And so the developer would then pay in lieu fee?
No, no, the developer would pay to do what they're obligated to do. They would, they're not obligated to do this portion that's off-site. What the city tries to do is cooperate with developers and expand over the undergrounding beyond that what they're required to do. And that can be to the developer's advantage also, because then they can qualify under Rule 20B, which gets a subsidy to the overall project. So there's times when it can be a benefit to both, and that's what we try to make it.
Well, yeah, that was the attempt here, have a larger undergrounding project so you could qualify for funds. I'm very concerned about this being precedent setting, because obviously, this is not going to be the last parcel to be developed in the City of Thousand Oaks. And I'm concerned about the fact, or anticipated fact, that there will be other applicants coming before the city asking for additional subsidy. And given that this is triple, quadrupled the number in some cases of other undergrounding costs, that is of great concern to me. It truly is. Let me see if I had another question. Yeah, I'm looking at seventy percent contribution versus the developer having less, or sixty percent city contribution and the developer forty percent. To me, it doesn't make a whole lot of fiscal sense to go along with this.
Mr. Fox?
A couple of things. The money that's in the account, is that money that we look at every two years when we do our budget?
Yes, the money comes in, and then, so currently, there are projects in the capital budget that are relying on that, but there's other times when money will come in. It's hard for us to know exactly when it's going to come in, but a development will come in and pay it. If another development comes in where we can use that money, then we'll come to council and say, here's an underground utility agreement, and we'll present it to council at that time.
All right. So it's not an issue of whether the city has the fund, it's an issue of priority?
I think we would say it's an issue of effectiveness. There's only, there's a lot of existing overhead lines in town. We try to do those ones that we can do somewhat cost effectively. These ones, you know, being as expensive as they are, will prevent us, if another development comes in, there won't be any money left where we could leverage those funds against another development.
Okay, fair enough. But I, what I also heard was priority relative to where it's located in the city. In your analysis or staff's analysis, I noted is how many feet per dollar? That's one of the things that you, that's kind of that, a pretty heavy piece of analysis. I'm going to pick up on what Mr. Gillette pointed out, and that is that staff appears to be satisfied that if we are unable to reconcile this split, that at least a portion of these overhead lines are going to be there basically in perpetuity. There's not going to be any more development on that, in that intersection, and we're going to live with those lines, particularly the one that's most problematic from an aesthetic standpoint. That's not ever going away. Is that a fair statement?
Right, that line would be there for some time. Or the city could pursue it under a 20A project, but...
Okay, but wouldn't it make sense to do that? That's my question. Wouldn't it make sense to do that when we're doing all the work out there now?
Well, only because we don't know, we haven't been able to verify these costs and determine whether these are the reasonable costs for the city to pay.
Okay, well, let me just jump in there. That's unfortunate, because council's being asked to make a decision, and we can't even get from staff that these, you guys agree on the numbers. I mean, that's a problem. How long have we been dealing with this?
We first got these costs, I think, in the middle of October.
Okay. It's one thing to have the developer say, hey, that's it, there ain't no more, it's non-negotiable. I think, you know, that's certainly an issue that we have to deal with, but if you can't agree on the basic number that you're fighting over, then that's a little problematic. Because if council were to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to take a different approach, we don't know what that number is. What if it's seven hundred thousand? Are you telling me it could be or less? You don't know? The total cost. If I'm hearing you right, staff's not, at this point, confident that the total cost is six hundred thousand.
Correct. What the normal process is, is we would enter into an agreement with the developer. That agreement would then require bids, a number of bids, we'd look at those, and...
Right. Is there a point, maybe the, I'm not quite sure who's best to answer this, but is there a point where the public benefit, because of, we're not going to have an opportunity to come back, outweighs the cost per foot? Meaning, if the idea is that, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the day, we've undergrounded most or all of the utilities that we have an opportunity to, and those that we can't do by, through the development process, hypothetically, we're going to come back later on and we're just going to pay for it?
I think...
If the idea is to underground the entire city, right?
Correct.
Okay, so is there a point in time where the public benefit is going to simply outweigh the line per foot, because we are either unable or we're unwilling to spend the money necessary to do the undergrounding?
Yeah, I think that point in time will come. I think at this point, the staff analysis, the way we looked at it, is what, is that there is, there continues to be more kind of lower hanging fruit, so we can get a bigger bang for our buck elsewhere. And at some point in time, we'll have to address some of these more expensive areas, but that we can get, you know, for this given amount, we can get a whole lot more footage done if we go elsewhere.
The complications that were cited, it sounds to me like those are totally out of the control of the developer. Other utility lines, water lines, all those things that apparently complicate this project and therefore make it more expensive, those are really not the fault of the developer or the city. That's just what exists there.
Yeah, any given site you develop has its various constraints that go along with it.
Okay, so, you know, from my perspective, I don't think this is really a benefit to the developer or the city. This is just a pretty expensive place where we're going to be doing undergrounding. And that's where I have a little bit of a problem, is we're asking the developer to pay really, I don't want to say an unfair burden, but a higher cost per foot based on what happens to be underneath the street where there's development is. Now, I guess that's the case in, for everybody?
You know, there are times, you know, one of the advantages for a developer, and this developer can speak as to whether there's an advantage for him or not, one of the advantages by going 20B is that it kicks him over the six hundred foot limit, and there's a twenty percent subsidy to the whole thing.
Right.
So the idea is that the cost comes down for everybody. What we don't know is that if the developer was to proceed on their own, then they would fall under this 20C, where it's entirely privately funded. We don't know what those costs would be, so I can't tell you whether the developer's cost under 20B is more or less. I mean, it could be that by going with the city's proposal, I'm sorry, with his proposal, it's costing him less this way. We don't know that. We can't say whether it is or not, and I don't know if they've gotten any, if they've really fully engineered a 20A project where they can make that comparison.
Is there a time element here that we have to act tonight? Or is there something that staff can do to reconcile at least the number of six hundred thousand, so we know what we're dealing with?
I mean, certainly from the staff perspective, we're willing to continue to try to work with the developer and come to agreement. We'd like to see this intersection get undergrounded. It's just that, at this point, the developer has told us that there is a time constraint. They were very anxious to get it before council, and we made it clear that, given the state of where we were, we would have to recommend denial. All right, we're more than happy, we're more than happy to meet with them and try to get something to work out.
Okay, we'll hear from them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just, I guess it's repeating the same thing. There are projects higher on the priority list where we could get much more leverage out of the four hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
And are, do any of them look like they're going to be happening soon?
What's the one you, go ahead, the project you just mentioned?
Hillcrest one is funded already.
Hillcrest is funded, as well as Reno and Kimber. That's already funded, that's, those are already taken out of the, you know, subtracted out of the account, so the four hundred thousand isn't needed for those two projects. The one that I did mention at Old Canal Road and Wendy would need to come out of that four hundred thousand. And again, that estimate's about one thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand right now for about four hundred feet crossing that intersection at Wendy and Old Canal Road. So that's an example of one that we could move forward with, given the funding available. The decision to use most of that funding now would mean either we, we'd have to appropriate some other kind of funds to do that project.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have two speaker.
Let me just, yeah, let me just offer, I think the issue of not knowing what the sum is problematic, but before the speakers come up, if there was, if we were to split, as I read the reports, you're basically talking sixty, forty, if we were to go fifty, fifty, and in terms of apportionment, that would provide, I think, money to do both projects. You might, I think, in looking at the cost, you may have to come up with thirty thousand bucks, but that would allow you to do both projects. And nobody, nobody walks away a winner here, really. And so it just, and if the applicant is, that's all there is, there ain't no more, then that's the way it is. But that's what I'd like to have us look at, because I'm hearing comments from the council that we are not very comfortable with leaving this intersection and never coming back. So I, because basically what we're talking about, guys, is we're really talking about, did some quick math here, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand bucks. That's what we're arguing over here, between the city's position and, was it one eighty?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, just food for thought.
Mr. Mitnick has a comment.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, very good discussion so far. I just like to help a little bit on framing some of the challenges here. Here's the question, and Mr. Fox was commenting on it, of public benefit versus private benefit. And some of the other projects have far more public benefit, so that's always a struggle. There are some other property owners who are, who would be benefiting from this, who aren't participating, so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. And also, when we look at what other developers do versus what's being proposed here, that has presented some challenges here for us. And it's not just the funding of it, but it would be nice to have more flexibility in working with the developer initially. But initially, it needs to be pointed out, city staff, or the city staff over the whole last year have come up quite a bit in, with respect to what we are recommending that we would have put in, the one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which in aggregate terms and on a per linear foot basis is far more than what we normally do. So we've demonstrated a lot of flexibility. It would be nice for the developer to demonstrate some flexibility on the other side.
Madam Mayor, could I just make a clarification, so we know what we're talking about here?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Fox.
Okay. In looking at the city's report, I know I'm a product of the L.A. City School System and in part parochial school system, but it appears to me that the city proposal was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, so I think the one hundred and twenty-three thousand gets us to around three hundred thousand, does it not? Okay? And for splitting it, if it's six hundred thousand, that's what I was talking about, the fifty-fifty, so I don't know where the one hundred and eighty is coming from. But my dad was a math teacher, and he wouldn't be surprised if I made a mistake on the arithmetic. So are we talking basically one hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Where the one eighty came from, if I could help, was, that's the difference between the city's proposal and the developer's proposal for the city. The developer would have us pay roughly three sixty. The city's proposal is roughly one eighty. So that's where the one eighty came from. You're correct with your analysis, saying if we split it and it's three hundred each, then the difference between our one eighty and that three hundred would be more than one twenty.
That's what I thought. And this is the city's proposal I'm looking at?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Bill Delapena?
Even a fifty-fifty split would still not leave enough money for some of the other priorities, which are much more cost effective, since we only have four hundred thousand dollars left in the account, as I'm looking at the numbers. And my parents were not math teachers.
I'm sorry, is that a question? You were, it sounded like a statement. What was your question? I'm sorry.
Well, we still, even with a fifty-fifty split, we still would not have enough money then in order to fund the other more pressing priority projects on, I believe it was Wendy, correct?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Fox said we would be close, and so it'd be one of those, you know, the ballpark, we've got about four hundred thousand in there, it would be close. We would need to, you know, scrounge maybe some money here and there when we came back for, with the agreement or whatever, whatever it was. If council chooses to go that way, we will have to come back with that agreement. At that time, we'd have to identify where any other funding was coming from.
All right, I am going to ask for our speakers to come up. Our first speaker is Tom Cohen, and he will be followed by John Rosenthal.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, council members. My name is Tom Cohen. I'm here on behalf of Double R Real Estate Associates LLC. John Rosenthal is the manager of the LLC and actively involved in the project's development at what we are now familiarly calling the Rancho Serrano Townhomes at Hillcrest and Rancho. The debate tonight and the discussion between staff and city council has been very helpful and will help form some of my comments that I will add to my presentation, and then we'll respond to Mr. Councilman Fox's comment or suggestion. As you all are aware, we're seeking a city contribution to this Rule 20B project, to overhead utilities at this key intersection. And I'll describe why I think this is a key intersection in a few minutes. As you are also aware, Mr. Rosenthal is responsible for undergrounding all the lines but his project, as the code defines it, as what's adjacent. We received approval of a undergrounding project specific to this property. It's called, it's called a underground utility waiver. That came in two thousand and six. When we came to bring, when we brought that approval of that project to Southern California Edison, it's their job to engineer it, Edison said to us, why aren't you doing a Rule 20B project? I think it might work here. I can't explain, as staff aptly did, all the intricacies of a Rule 20B project, but it sounded like a good idea to us, because we saw the overall benefit in the, all the lines being undergrounded at this intersection. And the cost to underground from Mr. Rosenthal's perspective remained the same, whether we did the Rule 20B project or pursuant to the city-approved underground utility waiver. The cost is absolutely the same for the private development. The additional lines the Rule 20B project contemplates undergrounding are not the responsibility of this developer. These lines are in the public domain, hence Edison's willingness to get involved. We were notified by the neighbors when this underground utility waiver was brought to an administrative hearing. In fact, it was the neighbors' comments that prompted the need for that hearing. We had to explain to the neighbors that this was not within the purview of our responsibility or the requirements of the municipal code, but we are firmly aware of those residents' desire to see these lines undergrounded. And I understand that there were some emails received by you. I don't think, in my review of those, that the writers of that fully understood what it was that was being proposed, based on my reading, anyway. We are aware that the city has sufficient funds. May I continue?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. Thank you, Mayor. We know that there's sufficient funds in the city's underground utility fund. Thus, it's not money coming out of the general fund. We know that staff, and it's been clear tonight, that they see that the money could be spread further among other undergrounding projects the city would like to see completed. However, in my review of the capital improvement budget cycle for the next two cycles, there was only one project contemplated, and that's already been funded, and that's the Hillcrest segment between Lone Oak and Almond. So be that as it may, we have the following to offer. First, this project is on the city's adopted priority list, as the project I just mentioned, up the street just east of Canal School Road. This project is engineered and ready to go now. And trust me, we understand staff's fiscal conservative, they want to utilize the funds in the manner that they believe is best. But as you've already aptly noted, the ability to underground at this intersection in the future is remote. If it's not, not now. We could do the project much more efficiently and less expensively than the city, because you've got prevailing wage law, and if this waits into the future, who knows how expensive it'll be. And if this waits into the future, who knows how expensive it'll be. And we appreciate staff's presentation on comparable projects, but we don't want to, really don't want to get into the merits of that, because I think it's fair to say that each project stands on its own. Each is different for any number of reasons. But we think that this intersection is one of the busy ones in town. This has, we had a traffic study done for the project.
Mr. Cohen?
In oh-four, yes. Want to wrap up?
Yeah, maybe it's time to wrap up.
It's got five thousand cars coming through at peak hour, peak hour. So we'd like you to take all these thoughts into consideration. I do want to respond to the comments real quick.
Okay.
This project does have costs.
Andy, why don't you ask the, oh. Councilmember Fox?
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, I guess my question is this. You heard the testimony, there's a finite number of dollars. You know, I'm relatively certain, at least from my perspective, and I don't know how the council's going to feel about this, we want to do both projects. Okay? I think you're right. I think in the foreseeable future, there's, while I get where staff's coming from, and they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do, we're really talking about two projects. However it pencils out, we need to do both projects. And I don't think it's fair to ask the city manager to go scrape up thirty thousand bucks. Okay? You know, that's my perspective. So what I'm looking at is some kind of redistribution between the sixty forty and somewhere that will allow for, I think the costs are fixed for the Newbury Park project. Do we already know what that cost is?
Those are just, at this point, we're just in the planning stages. We don't know ultimately what the final cost will be, but it's estimated one thirty. That's the best we can do right now.
Okay.
Yeah. It has not been engineered.
So that leaves two seventy out of the, okay. Right? Okay. So that's what we're looking at. It's not exactly fifty-fifty, but we're looking at around two seventy.
I can appreciate that, Councilman Fox. I just want you to be aware, though, that the costs are fixed. Those were, those costs that were presented were based on two qualified bids and contract proposals from the various utility companies. Those are not estimates. Those are real, hard numbers.
I don't think I have, you know, again, you know, we have a very high level of confidence in staff. If staff's saying they're unsure, I'm not questioning when you're testifying that you're pretty confident that that is the cost. That's what I hear you saying.
That's correct.
Okay. Fair enough. And again, these are difficult, and let me just say, I think, and I speak for the council, we're disappointed, and I'm really looking at you, okay? We're disappointed that this wasn't able to be negotiated out. This is not the best way for us to do public policy in terms of negotiating at a council meeting. But in a sense, I'm hearing from the council that we don't want to miss the opportunity to underground this, but I can also get a sense that we're not going to take money out of a project that we've already dealt with in order to accomplish this over here. So we're really looking at, while it's not fifty-fifty, it's pretty close to that two seventy figure. And I understand there may be some give and take on that, but that's the general parameters. You need some time to talk to your client?
I do. I do want to, I do want to talk to Mr. Rosenthal before we, we'll just spend a couple of minutes discussing that.
You know, I think you saw from the discussion and the questions, we're genuinely interested in accomplishing the public benefit value here. But I think the other points that have been brought up are correct, and that is, this is a tremendous amount of money per foot compared to other projects, and a fair person has to be able to look at that and say, "Look, you're, you may be creating a precedent, and certainly we're compromising our ability for future negotiations down the road." So, you know, that's got to be taken into consideration. I know that's not your client's problem, but that has to be something that the council's looking at. On the other hand, this is clearly a prominent intersection. There's a freeway off-ramp there. There's, this is the last opportunity for development. I think there's a good public policy argument for a city to spend some dollars here, over and above what we normally would, to accomplish what our goal is.
And we appreciate that.
All right.
And we'll, if you just give us a minute?
I don't know if there's other questions. I threw a lot out there. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it.
Mr. Gillette?
We've been going now for three hours. Let me make a suggestion, that we recess for about fifteen minutes. Give them an opportunity to talk, give us an opportunity to take a breather. We could do one of our closed sessions, get it out of the way.
Okay. Well, I think that if we're going to be looking at a number, you were saying the estimate on the other project was one thirty. Well, it's calling it kind of close to exactly divide that four hundred, so I think maybe two fifty would be a good number for the city. Mr. Gillette?
I've already stated, I think that we should give some time here. I think that council wants some time to talk to their, they've listened to all the comments.
Okay.
They need a little time to talk with their, with their developers, so.
Ms. Bildelapena?
Thank you. While the council deliberates, perhaps you can talk to your client, but certainly I'm uncomfortable having this negotiation currently in a public forum like this, when in fact, I don't think we should take a sidebar or a break. I think it should be public, but I don't think it's a good idea that we actually are having to do this. But since we are doing it, it should be public. And I do want to state, be on the record, that I definitely will not negotiate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will go with staff's recommendation of one seventy-eight, and I will be against anything else that the council will try to negotiate.
We're not talking about us negotiating with them. We're talking about, we are taking a break and having a closed session, and Mr. Cohen talking to his client, that doesn't need to be in public.
That was my understanding. That's what I proposed, and I.
What? Okay. So let's take a break, and do you want to announce a closed session?
Yes, if that's council's pleasure.
Sounds like.
Pick the right ones. No, yeah, no, sorry. We were going, we have two, I'm just going to say them all, then council can pick and choose which ones we do, all right? And then it won't have to be repeated at the end. Council's going to go into closed session for conference with labor negotiations, employee organization, senior management association, Thousand Oaks Management Association, Thousand Oaks City Employee Association, designated representative, city manager, and human resource director. I'm representing employees, executive manager. The city representative is the city, is the executive manager, city representative, city manager. I'm representing employees, city manager and city attorney, city designated representative, Mayor Irwin, and human resource director pursuant to government code fifty-four nine fifty-seven point six. Conference with real property negotiators, property parcel located at southeast corner three ten Kelly Road and eighteen seventy-two Newbury Road, Thousand Oaks. Agency negotiator, city manager and city attorney, negotiating parties for Conejo Valley Unified School District, Dr. Joel Kirchenstein and Dr. Jeffrey Barstead, under negotiation price and term pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point eight. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, DePello versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Sola versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine subsection A. Conference with real property negotiators, property parcel located at forty-four six Erbs Road. Agency negotiators, Mark Watkins, Public Works Director and Deputy Public Works Director, negotiating parties, STEM rector, Truque Real Estate, under negotiation price and terms pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point A. Thank you.[1156.41]
Okay, we are back on and I guess for, we have Tom, well, actually you've already spoken your piece and we can have Mr. Rosenthal come forward. I'd like to say upfront that I'm actually a little uncomfortable with all this negotiating and I would really rather have personally the staff go back and negotiate with Mr. Cohen and I think that council, what we really want to see is both projects being done for that amount of money. So that's really the direction I would prefer to go in. But why don't we have Mr. Cohen, did you want to come up and speak?
Thank you, Tom Cohen, City of Thousand Oaks. Mr. Rosenthal is prepared to answer any questions, but just to get, cut to the chase as quickly as possible here. Just so you're aware, I mean, this is, we're asking for funding by this project that's already way beyond our budget. We've already spent $30,000 in engineering costs to do this. We know we've done that in our own risk, but we thought we had a proposal that made sense and provided a huge public benefit. But in the willingness, in the spirit of trying to get this thing resolved and finished up, I think that we're prepared to split this 50-50 with the city and move on.
All right. Do we have some comments on that, Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, could I get an explanation then between Mr. Cohen and Public Works? What exactly does that mean now in view of this, the understanding of the comments that Mr. Cohen just made? What do you understand? That's fine, Tom. Mark?
I guess what I hear, the total's 602,000. They're saying they'll be responsible for 301,000. The city would be responsible for the other 301.
Is that your understanding of it?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments, Ms. Bill de la Pena?
Thank you. Actually, I have a question of Mr. Cohen. Obviously, staff has negotiated or tried to negotiate with your client and at some point in time you thought you should appeal this to the city council. Did you feel that you would have a better chance at having your proposal approved by the city council?
The rationale for coming to the city council was that we felt we were arguing from totally two different, totally different sides, different methods of analyzing the cost. And staff looked at the, as you heard, their formula that they used was the undergrounding lineal footage divided into the total cost. Well, if you look at the analysis that Mr. Rosenthal and his engineer prepared, it was a very painstaking process. He looked at segment by segment of all the lines that are being undergranted and assigned and allocated to whether it was an item that his project was required to cover the cost or whether or not it was a city-required item. And that was information that was documented and provided to the city. So we were, we were looking at this from two completely different angles and I think both parties will agree that at that point in time, the numbers were so far apart that we felt that it was really a public policy decision for the city council. We didn't come in here with any preconceived notions if that was your question, council member, but we were just asking the council to weigh in.
Thank you. All right, any other, Mr. Gillette?
Madam Mayor, the, the comments about precedent-setting and all of those things, that didn't go past me. But I put it in the context of, the city's 44 years old and since October of 64, we've been moving towards developing, building a community. We're now at a point where we're, we're ending, we're approaching the end of that. We just, within the last two years, spent the highest amount that has ever been spent to acquire a piece of open space for a specific reason. It wasn't precedent-setting. It was something that we felt we had to do because there was a one-time opportunity. There's two intersections on Hillcrest that are of particular concern to me. One is Erbs Road and the other one is Rancho. They happened. Rancho doesn't even line up. You come into Hillcrest on Rancho from T.O. Boulevard, then you've got to take a hard right and go down a block to pick it up again. It just, it occurred. It evolved. And I see this movement and I see the willingness on, or the appropriateness of the compromise to move us in the direction to address an unsightly area that has impacts on reception of electricity, cable, all the other things that are up on those poles. And I recognize the difficulty that both the applicant and our public work staff got into. I think this is meaningful. It accomplishes the objectives of the council and it moves us forward to dealing with an area that would not be dealt with, would be there virtually in perpetuity. So with that thought in mind, I would move the, well, this isn't a recommendation from staff now, so I would, I would move that we accept the compromise as understood by the applicant and our public work staff if, if the public work staff with this information can in good conscience recommend the modification. If not, do we have to adjourn to let a more formal process take place and bring it back to us again? That's a question for the city attorney.
Well, if you're asking the staff to make a decision tonight, is what I'm...
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, in terms of the Brown Act, my feeling is we, the staff recommendation was to deny, but all the numbers were there and there's actual, it's out there in terms of what to do. So that's not an impingement or a hindrance to what you want to accomplish. And if so, if you want to go ahead and make a motion that you're willing to do for this amount of money or that amount of money, that is totally within council's prerogative at this point. If you're asking staff, do they need more time to go back and go through some kind of process, then I think you need to give them some kind of direction as to where you're, you know, you can give them some type of direction and ask them to move back, whether it's at the next meeting or whatever. But given what's in the agenda, I think you have the prerogative to do whatever it is you want concerning this project tonight.
Well, that's, that's why I'm trying to structure a motion that if, what I heard in all the discussion before and if we could reach some sort of an accord that moves us closer to a 50-50 split on this, that we would have, we would, with all of the numbers available to us, we would be within a range of acceptability. If, if that's premature, I need to know that, or is there a willingness on the council part? And the only way I'm going to find that out is to put it in form of a motion and see where it goes. Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Mr. Fox?
Let me, let me try maybe a little bit different approach. Do you have a motion on the table, Mr. Gillette, or are we still in discussion?
No, we're discussing a motion. We're discussing, we're discussing how to get from this point forward.
Okay. I don't know that I'm offering an amendment, but let me just offer this as some middle ground. I think there needs to be some further discussions between staff and the applicant. And what I would propose is that we continue this item to allow for further discussions between the staff and the applicant. Let them work out and come back with a number. We don't really know what that number is, but a number. I'm a little uncomfortable with the staff saying, well, it sounds to me like it's 301,000 dollars. And I think we've given some good parameters for the staff and the applicant to look at and to come back to the next council meeting with a, with a settled amount, given the discussion and then that...
All right, let me ask staff this, and what does a delay of two weeks mean? What are the consequences of that?
From the staff's perspective, there, there are no consequences. You might make sure that the developer's okay with that two-week delay, but we're more than happy to go through that process.
Mr. Cohen?
Let me, Tom Cohen, just to understand what we're coming back with. Can I get a little assistance with that? Are we going to, are we evaluating, looking at the numbers again that we provided? What is it that we're going to come back with?
Can I jump in?
Well, actually, do we need to, you were, you had a motion. Can you repeat what the motion is?
No, let, let me do this to get, to make sure that we can discuss this as openly as possible. Let me withdraw a motion. I did have a motion. Let me withdraw it. Now, we're looking at what kind of process needs to take place between now and our next council meeting to give staff and the applicant time to fully understand the numbers and come back to us in two weeks. And what are the consequences of that? Does the delay cause some unintended consequence that we're not aware of?
Well, just, just for perspective purposes only, the project is expected to be completed in June, and I'm talking about the construction of the homes. So we want to make sure that we have an agreement in time. If we don't, we have to go back to Edison, Verizon, Time Warner to re-engineer the plan, which is going to be at a cost of, I don't know, eight, eight weeks? You know, based on their availability and all that good stuff. So that impinges on our, our construction schedule and deliverables to the, to the people that want to buy these homes. So I just need to get a feel that we're, what it is we're coming back with.
So is it if...
Are we coming back with a reimbursement agreement with terms negotiated and then it's for the council to decide at that moment in time? I'm just, I just want to be clear what I, what it is that's coming back.
Well...
Ms. Bill de la Pena actually has been raising her hand for a while.
Fair enough.
Please.
Well, I don't think I'm able to answer your question, other than that I would have been quite comfortable to approve staff's recommendation tonight because, as the saying goes, don't go broke trying to save money. As much as I do believe that we do need to underground our utilities, there are other priorities. And given the downturn in the economy, I wonder whether this is truly such an eyesore that needs to be taken care of immediately. It certainly, I certainly have not received any complaints regarding that intersection. I hear complaints about other things much more often than power poles being unsightly. And being fiscally conservative, I feel that staff's recommendation tonight is still very generous considering that it is quadruple the amount of some of the other projects that we are currently involved in. So it appears though that my colleagues are willing to enter into some sort of other negotiation, but I'm simply not willing to do that.
Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cohen, you wanted to know a specific, I really want to know exactly how much it's going to cost the applicant to underground the utilities that he's conditioned to do, and also how much it's going to cost the city to take care of the part that they committed to. And numbers that staff and you guys actually agree upon. That's a bone of contention, as far as I can tell.
I understand. And attached to your staff report is a breakdown of every specific segment of just what you described. And we've allocated 243, and don't quote me, but they're in there, to our, to the applicant's specific project. And that's a number that we can rely on whether we do the undergrounding project in totality or not. And the $359,000 number is what was allocated to the city project. And it's a, it's there for staff to evaluate, review, consider, debate, refute. We just haven't heard that yet.
Well, you know, I, I think it's been said by a couple of people up here that this is a very awkward place from which to do business like this. It seems like this is better done at a, at another level. And I agree with Mr. Fox's recommendation. It'd be really nice to continue this and let you guys work together and come to a, common terms anyway.
We're, we're prepared to do that, Councilmember Glancy, but we, we didn't have an avenue to get to this point before. I mean, staff took a position and we just said, well, you know, we can, we can do this project or not do it. We weren't, we're not doing this because we want to spend money out of our budget that's not there right now. That's really not where we want to go. But we want to accomplish this because we see, and the council has expressed tonight, a desire to get this undergrounded. So we want to cooperate together. We want to do this together.
Well, and...
Okay, I was just going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm still going to stick with my original comment. There is a higher priority project for 120, $30,000. And I understand that it's very cost-effective to do the undergrounding now, but if both projects can't be done for the $400,000, I would have a hard time going along with the higher number. Mr. Fox?
And that's precisely why one of the elements of going back, we need to be able to do both projects. So you just need to know that going in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
And we'll accept, we'll let the chips fall where they fall. Number two, I think determining what's in the public domain, what's the developer's responsibility, it seems to me we have, you know, responsibility... responsibility, it seems to me, we have, you know, responsible folks here on both sides, that given a week, given the parameters of this discussion, now we frame the issue of what we're willing to do and candidly what we're not willing to do, that you sit down with city staff and you can hopefully arrive at some agreed-upon criteria by which you're going to determine how you assign responsibility.
Fair enough.
I'm sure you've done that before, but I, my suggestion would be, agree on some criteria that you're going to use and then assign responsibility and then that should arrive you at a number.
Fair enough, and then we would just expect that in two weeks it's a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
I would almost guarantee that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the intent of council, is to bring this back and give you an up or down vote.
Do we, do we need to make a motion to continue then?
I'm going to move for the continuance of this item for, until the next council meeting, in open hearing basis, is that the right?
It's not a public hearing, so it's just...
Okay, so, all right, okay, just move this item, continue it until the next council meeting.
Okay, vote please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, council members.
All right, we are on to item 12A, and that is Councilmember Gillette or Dr. Glancy?
No, you go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Gillette and I had the opportunity to interview applicants recently for appointment to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Committee, and as usual, the pool of applicants was very impressive, and the decision was not necessarily an easy one. However, with deliberation, Mr. Gillette and I agreed together that Mr. Mike Blandon, Michael Blandon, Blanton, we recommend to council for approval.
That's your motion?
That is.
All right, vote please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 13A, council issues and recommendations, follow-up reports on meetings or conferences, and we have none, and item 14 is city manager.
Madam Mayor, Member of the council, no items to follow up on with respect to requests from the public. On the state budget cuts, as mentioned in council last meeting, we'll keep this on the council agenda as we're monitoring what's going on in Sacramento. Sacramento, the state government's looking at a budget deficit of $14 billion, and we fully anticipate hits to the cities, and right now we don't have a specific number of what's going to happen to us, but we know our, either sales tax, property tax, or vehicle license fees will be cut, and it could likely be a seven-figure number that comes down to cities the size of Thousand Oaks with our budget. So without going into any more details, we're going to keep an eye on that. And we also know that our transportation funds are, are at risk, and Mark Watkins and I participated in a conversation with Darren Kettle, the VCTC Executive Director, this week, so we're watching that very carefully. Announcements, upcoming items, the next council meeting will be on February 26th, and as we just heard, we'll have the follow-up on the townhome project, the undergrounding of the utilities. We will have one public hearing dealing with the Westlake Park Center. These are the office buildings going up off of Towns Gate, right up near the border with the city of Westlake Village. There's just a minor lot-line adjustment, but that requires a public hearing. And the, the big issue on the council agenda on the 26th will be the financial strategic plan, the next phase, and we'll have our sales tax consultant come in and give an overview of what's going on with sales tax revenues, and that'll be pretty revealing. That's it, by the way, city manager follow-up, thank you.
Ms. Albano?
Thank you. Council will be going back into closed sessions, which have already been announced. There will be nothing necessary to report out under the Brown Act, so therefore I believe that the council will be adjourning to after closed session.
All right, and our adjournment tonight is in memory of Joe Smorsky, and Mr. Fox is going to be reading the adjournment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those of us that have been around the community for a while, we are mourning this week the loss of Joe Smolarski, who passed away on February 7th, 2008. If you've been around Thousand Oaks, the Thousand Oaks Golf Course, Los Robles Hospital, have worked in mini mansions, the senior center, or been around city hall, you know Joe. Joe was originally from Illinois, he moved to California and after his retirement dedicated his entire life to community service. During his retirement, as I mentioned, he worked at Los Robles Golf Course as the community greeter, and that was one of Joe's true loves. He loved working at Los Robles and talking to members of the community and visitors and telling them about the city that he loved so much, Thousand Oaks. He volunteered for mini mansions, the retired senior volunteer program, Los Robles Hospital, and he also won a lot of awards and recognition within the community. The John Conlin Award for, from Thousand Oaks Rotary, the Paul Harris Award from the Westlake Rotary. He was a member of the St. Pascal Baylons Men's Club, and Father Dave said at church he was one of the original ushers when St. Pascal opened in 1963. He's truly a pillar of the church. He served in the Council of Aging, and he was honored by Pope John Paul for humanitarian service. Also active in local PTA, Little League baseball, and park-winner football. What you may not know about Joe is he was a true patriot. He was truly part of the Greatest Generation, and in fact, a decorated war hero. Joe was one of the first to hit the beaches at Normandy as a young teenager and earned a Purple Heart, four Battle Stars, and a Bronze Star serving his country. So on behalf of a grateful city and a city council, we want to express our thoughts and prayers to his wife, June, his two children, and his five grandchildren. Thanks.
And we will be adjourning our meeting to our regular meeting on February 26th.